... on council, please note that tonight's meeting is recorded and broadcast on Channel 18 and that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence known. Seeing none, please silence your devices. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call?
Counselors, Beedenbender?
Here.
Crocker?
Here.
Cullum?
Here.
Dagwan?
Here.
Flores?
Here.
Rapkarsiti?
Present.
Hebert?
Present.
Lebec?
Here.
Neary?
Here.
Schnep?
Here.
Stein-Hilber?
Here.
Tinsley?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, before we have public comment, we have some recognition that we want to give out, so I'd ask the town manager to join me at the podium, please.
Markell's Town Manager, and thank you for this opportunity to recognize four of our employees here in the town of Barnstable. On July 3rd, at Koval's Beach, at approximately 3:30 PM, a seventeen-year-old hyannis girl was pulled from the water, and the emergency action plan was put into full action by lifeguard Ethan Serhall. Ethan began CPR with a physician's assistant from New York when the young lady was unresponsive with no breath and no pulse. After one cycle of two-man CPR, the young lady began coughing and expelling seawater, and was put into a recovery position by Ethan and lifeguard Colleen Ellis. The lifeguard aide, Haley Rudman, cleared the water and joined lifeguard Luca Powers in assisting with the crowd control and monitoring the waterfront. Gate attendant Victoria Richardson took control of the gate so that the comm. rescue and Barnstable Police had easy access to the lot. Beach supervisor Elizabeth Els had called 911 and assisted the crowd control and directing the rescue and the police to the site on the beach. The physician's assistant replied later that Ethan's knowledge and action of putting the young lady in the recovery position is what saved her life, and he had no knowledge himself of this need. You know, our lifeguards go out there and train regularly and drill. They do it because that's the way it's taught by our senior staff with Patty Machado and John Gleason and their subordinates. Many times, it looks like a job that everybody would want to have, but certainly when they become first responders, we all realize how critical and how serious the role that they play for our community is. So, I always say to them when I get the chance to not just recognize them for this sort of action, but just when we have the opportunity to speak with them, that we're all so proud of them, and they represent our community so well, all of them. And certainly, this example of what they're capable of doing, saving a life, is just an amazing representation of what they're doing out there for us. So, our President of the Town Council would like to recognize, I believe, three of the four are here with us tonight, so why don't you come on up? Patty Machado, why don't you come up with them? Ethan Haley and Colleen are here. And Tim, come on.
Thank you all for being here. And the word "hero" gets thrown around a lot, but this is real-world hero stuff here in the community, so we wanted to have you in for a small token of our gratitude for your service back on July 4th. So, this is from the Barnstable Town Council. You each have a certificate, but I'll read one of them. Town of Barnstable Town Council does hereby recognize, in your name, for heroic efforts displayed on July 4th, 2018, with the greatest appreciation and gratitude, the residents of the town of Barnstable, thank you. And it's signed by myself, Eric Steinhofer, President of the Barnstable Town Council. Thank you very much for what you have done. Great examples for everyone. And Colleen. We did have one for Luca as well, so we'll make sure this gets handed. Thank you very much. All right, it's always nice to start off on a good note like that. All right, so we're going to public comment. I'm going to ask if you're here to speak on an item that's going to have a public hearing tonight, that you wait until the item comes up. But with that being said, if anyone chooses to speak at public comment here, please come forward, state your name, and limit your time to three minutes, please.
Good evening. My name is Phineas Fisk. I live in Comahquit. I'm on the Board of Directors of Tales of Cape Cod. I'm here to urge the council to approve a letter of support for a Declaration of September 27th as Cape Cod Independence Day. Why? Over the years, there's been some awareness that something dramatic happened at the old colonial courthouse on Old Kings Highway back in 1774, when a protest by as many as fifteen-hundred people prevented the fall session of the Barnstable County Court of Common Pleas from sitting. But recent historical research has shown the impact of that protest that September Day was more substantial, and its consequences were more far-reaching than originally thought. In effect, the outcome of that event was not just to prevent the court from sitting, it was to free Cape Cod entirely of British control, almost two years before the United Colonies declared their independence in Philadelphia in 1776. And the further result of that affront to British dominance was to help set the stage for the war that began seven months later at Lexington and Concord. Yet few people are aware of the magnitude of what happened here in Barnstable that day in 1774. A declaration by today's county leaders celebrating what their predecessors accomplished twenty-four, 244 years ago, could help correct that historic oversight. Tales of Cape Cod, whose goal is to preserve Cape Cod's history, hopes the Barnstable Town Council will lend its support to that declaration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Is there any council response to public comment? Councilor Flores?
Yes, I want to thank Phineas Fisk, who just spoke relative to the resolution to recognize September 27th as Cape Cod Independence Day. He brought this to me a few months ago, and collectively managed to get it before Cape Cod Commission, as well as this board. And unbeknownst to me, and probably a lot of people in the audience, two years before the official firing of weapons at Concan and Lexington, there was the movement down here in Barnstable on 6A at the old courthouse. That really was the precursor to what occurred two years subsequent to that event. So, with that being said, I think we can honestly say that the cradle of liberty really resides in Barnstable, Massachusetts. So, I thank Phineas for doing the homework and the research to make this happen, and this is on the agenda for tonight for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we're going to move right into Town Manager Communications. Town Manager Markell's.
I don't have anything as exciting as lifeguard rescues, so... We are proceeding with the tasks in the action budget calendar for FY 2020 as scheduled. This is actually a repeat of my last update, because besides attaching another budget calendar for you to review, nothing's changed, but I'll repeat it because it's significant. Town Council's Strategic Plan Workshop is scheduled for, thank you, Lynn, September 15th, and a joint meeting workshop with School Committee to review the financial condition of the town is planned for October 4th. No change to the Mass. Department of Fish and Wildlife, USGS, DEP, water supply, and our staff discussions relevant to future water supply wells that are proposed out on the 250-acre parcel northeast of the hyannis water system. We are still awaiting the results of the last round of quality sampling for the heavy oil-type contaminants that could potentially be found in groundwater. So, we'll let you know. We expect those any day now, so I hope by your next meeting, we're able to report out on all the quality results and have a scheduled date to discuss quality and the modeling runs that have been done. We continue our discussions with Vineyard Wind, relevant to their proposal to construct transmission facilities that would interconnect with the proposed offshore wind farm in federal waters. I met with Vineyard Wind on Monday, and we are working toward a final draft host agreement by September. In anticipation of that host agreement, I have brought forward a resolve to authorize the town manager to sign into a host agreement for a first reading this evening. That'll come later in your agenda. In addition, we may also have land or easement-related authorizations involving the Conservation Commission and the Town Council, relevant to where they may request to land, and how they traverse through the town of Barnstable to the substation up off of Independence Drive. And as I have more information on that, I will bring that forward to you as well. I reported last meeting that the recycling market continues to change, relevant to solid waste management. The lack of a market to dispose of single-stream recyclables has made it necessary to resume source separation of recyclables, develop a more aggressive waste stream reduction program, and modify our operations at the transfer station. I spoke with John Fisher at DEP a couple of times, but as recent as today, regarding the recycling market changes, and DEP is well aware of this, it's a nationwide challenge. Certainly, everybody in every community in Massachusetts is managing this same issue. DEP is actively working with communities and vendors to identify markets for various recyclable products, recognizing that single-stream approach doesn't work in the marketplace. Our staff participated in a webinar with DEP this afternoon. I have not been briefed as a result of that. I know that they are trying to identify in the market, and in the foreseeable future in the market, what will be recyclable, therefore, we can actually get rid of it as a recyclable, rather than some of the products that, right now, there may not be places to get rid of them as recyclables. So, they're kind of doing a reality check on their list of recyclables. They'll get back to us quickly. We are in the process of implementing and hope to have, you know, every time you change, it creates confusion, certainly amongst our customers, and we want to have this all in place by October 1st, so that we can, you know, hold it in place for a reasonable amount of time, at least until the market changes again. So, I will continue to communicate, as well as staff, relative to this issue. The Dog Park Project continues to progress with the planned completion of October of this year. I'm glad to report that. We had had major delays, and now the contractor seems to be back on task, and they haven't missed a date since we had had, put them on formal notice, relevant to that performance. So, that is progressing. As a follow-up to our workshop on municipal dredge, on our municipal dredge program that was at your last council meeting, we did receive an opinion from bond council that use of the special revenue fund for sewer and private roads is an acceptable source of funding for this program. We also received an opinion from the Department of Revenue that in certain circumstances, CPC funds would be an eligible funding source for the program. Those were two areas that were, I had a question mark next to, and hadn't confirmed that yet, so we did receive confirmation. So, moving forward, those are funding mechanisms that we can consider as part of the array of funding that we may have available for that program. Tomorrow, Friday, August 17th, the Barnstable Police Department, DPW, fire departments, and other town officials will be conducting a training exercise at the Barnstable Police Department. This is a tabletop exercise to prepare for operations of our emergency response center for a Category 3 hurricane. We haven't come together and run this sort of simulation collectively before. If you don't know, our police department is our emergency response center, and our police chief, or his delegate or designee, runs the emergency response center during those sorts of coordinated responses. At the last town council meeting, residents from Commerce Road and Marrisman Creek area expressed concern regarding flooding in their neighborhood. I've attached an outline of action taken to date, future activities, and I have a very brief couple of pictures, just to give you, or try to illustrate what we're doing, and then what the, I talked about two different issues, you know, the immediate drainage and improving some of that, but then bigger picture, some of the challenges we have, being a coastal community, and trying to address issues such as various storm events, and certainly storm surge. So, a couple of quick slides, if you're familiar with the area. Barnstable Harbor is over on your far left, Commerce Road, well, you can see Millway going bottom to top, Commerce Road looping through the center, and the pinkish-colored area is, the light purple is actually called the velocity zone. So, during a hundred-year storm event, you actually have moving waters through those areas. So, you certainly don't want to see structures or infrastructure in those areas, and if you do, you need to be planning appropriately for it, because there's a good chance it's going to be significantly impacted. Perhaps, you know, nature will remove it. The pink areas are flood zones in the hundred-year flood zone. Now, this has nothing to do with our roads, or, this is what nature puts on us, you know, statistically every hundred years to have to deal with. So, you can see that many of the roadways and many of the structures in that area in a hundred-year storm event will be in water. So, that's just something that, we have this for our entire town, we've had it for many years. This isn't unique to this area. This is, you know, coastal USA, especially low-lying elevation coastal areas. So, these are called FEMA maps. We have them in our GIS, they're available to our public, we can certainly provide them for review. The culvert that we're talking about is in the lower right, that we're really focusing on with this specific effort that we're putting forward. We're trying to see, sometimes when you put a man-made structure in here, it could impact what nature's going to do. We don't want it to negatively impact that. We want to make sure the systems are flowing, it's moving water. We also may want to raise the road, so that we can have safe access egress from this. This is typically, not the only area in Barnstable, but this is typically an area that DPW and police have trucks with barricades. We know during storm events, much less than a hundred-year storm, this area floods. So, we're going to try to work with our residents to address their concerns. Now, if you jump to a hurricane surge, looking at the various colors here, light green, a little bit darker, yellow, and then pink, that's moving from a Category 1 to a Category 4. We didn't show Category 5. But once again, you can see that we have significant flooding in this area. And this is not flooding that can be changed easily. This is what nature brings to us to try to manage. So, you can see the properties that will be impacted by this. And once again, this is not unique to this area. We can run this all the way around the coastline, certainly in Barnstable or the Cape, and every low-lying coastal area has these challenges. So, I just thought it was, and again, I threw the culvert on there, just to let you know what we're trying to understand and improve upon, so we can make sure we're moving water through that area, so we don't add to what nature is going to deliver us from time to time. So, I thought it was important for you to see those pictures and understand this, because this is, and now you throw on top of that the potential for, you know, climate change, and if waters rise, that will make this even more complicated. Thank you. But we are actively working on this.
Thank you, Mark. Any council questions for the town manager? Councilor Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President, Mark. First, thank you for obviously addressing the issue in precinct 1 on Commerce Road from Blis Point into the Common Fields area, which is sometimes referred to as Marrisman Creek. Having met with constituents of mine in that area a number of times, the question always comes down to, you know, what can we expect prior to the oncoming winter of 2019, where the potential for storms to exist, and it appears that the hundred-year storms are occurring every year, as opposed to every 100 years? And, you know, that's an unfortunate set of circumstances, but there are many folks who have lived there for many, many years, and some claim that, you know, when the Commerce Road was rebuilt, when the new culvert that you pointed out in the low-lying part of Commerce was installed, that's when the water problems began. So, my question really is, when a constituent says to me, or says to you, and I also want to thank you for agreeing to have a meeting somewhere in the immediate future to meet with the citizens of that area, because they, like me and like you, you know, want to get this figured out and resolved, so that they don't lose their properties. There's still houses down there that are inhabitable. For folks that perhaps aren't aware of it, there were many, many homes where the water not only flooded the basement, where it was one to two feet in the living room, because you had water coming in from Blis Point, from the tides, and then you had the water coming in through the Millway, the Millway Bridge into the creek and over the embankment. So, they were getting water from both ends. So, the question comes down to, God forbid that happens again, we as a town, are we prepared to fund it with emergency monies? Are we prepared to go to the state government to get emergency monies? Have we begun to formulate that kind of a plan? Because that's what folks are looking for, that's what I'm looking for as their representative, and it's a critical issue. It's reached beyond crisis, because people are losing their homes. There's a number of different houses that are up for sale, because people are panicked that, obviously, we just don't have control of it. So, I'd like your advice on that, so I can share that, and folks who are watching, and many of them are, and we'll be posting when that meeting will be happening over the next two to three weeks, so that we can have, you know, a confident discussion that points to a direction, because showing the maps is one thing, but what is the solution to what our problem is?
I think we, well, what we can do immediately, and have done, is to clean out and continually maintain the existing structures. What we're in the process of doing is understanding how those existing structures serve that area, relevant to this issue of, you know, daily changes in weather and tide, and then in more extreme situations, how they serve that function. And I believe a short-to-medium-range outcome will be, we'll say, well, you should modify drainage structures, you may want to modify road elevation, you may want to modify the culvert, and then we'll go through a permitting process, and we will have to, I believe, I mean, this is a, the culvert alone's a 2 million-plus project, so we're going to have to go out and look to all potential sources of funding, once we identify how the money can be best spent, how a project can be best done to serve the needs of our residents in that area. I also think we need to educate that there are things beyond our control, and people need to be aware of that. And we'll do everything that we can, but nature will do what nature's going to do, and we will try to plan for that appropriately, and protect our resources in our community as best as we can. Yep.
Councilor Cullum?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. So, regarding this slide that you just put up, I have concerns that the hundred-year storm is now maybe the 10-year storm, or the 15-year storm, so I don't know how we accelerate these plans, or whatever, but, I mean, I, the hundred-year storm analogy is long gone for me, after having a yard full of water last year for months and months and months. And so, I totally feel for these people, and I hope we can work fast on it. And as a town, that we work on it, because it's so important to us. Also, I wanted to ask, where can residents find the FEMA map if they want to take a look at it, based upon where they're located, and what they are in the floodplain, and what their 100-year, 10-year storm?
DPW has hard copies, I'm sure they can access electronic versions, but third-floor Town Hall GIS. I believe there may be access as well, I'll confirm this for you, but I think you can go online and get it, so I'll get you a link.
I think I remember when it was growth management, that there, when we had that whole scare about insurance, flood insurance, and everything else that Joanne Bunt had it somewhere electronically, so if we could post that again on the website, I think that would be helpful for people, especially going into this time of year.
We will all employ and communicate that out for us, so that she can provide people, if they want to go in and look, so they better, I mean, the Long Beach Road area, there's areas of hyannis. Every year, we prepare the same way, when we have various sorts of events.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilor Rapkarsiti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mark. Number six, the municipal dredge program. Can you clarify, without, you know, belaboring it, the opinion received from DOR that in certain circumstances, the CPC funds would be eligible for funding that?
Attorney Wile is here. I think we have to be very thoughtful of where we would do that. I believe where we are taking dredge material and putting it on a beach that is open to the public, and we are creating more beach, usable beach by the public, then that would be considered. I don't know if there's any other specific detailed areas where we may also do this.
So, CPC, DOR wouldn't recommend, or wouldn't allow CPC to be used for safe boating, which is considered recreational?
I didn't have the conversation, perhaps Ruth can share what, I mean, I don't know that she asked every question of them, but if there's some...
Yeah, will the town attorney come up?
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. For the record, Ruth Wile, Town Attorney, great to see everybody. You have to step back and look at the Community Preservation Act, and look at what interests are protected, and where funds can be used for. Recreational land, emphasized land, so if you create a more beach area through removing dredge spoils to a public beach, that works. If you enhance the wading area, if you do dredging, and it increases somebody's ability to wade, to go further in the water, that would be potentially, you know, fundable under the CPA, but it's a case, but I think we've discussed this before, we have to look at each project and evaluate it in terms of the CPA Act. But there was definitely support for increasing, using the dredge spoils to increase a beach, that seemed to be well within the parameters of the Community Preservation Act. Okay, thank you.
Any other counselors? Councilor Schnep?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mark. In your report about recycling, you mentioned developing a more aggressive waste stream reduction program. Could you elaborate on what that might include?
Well, I think we need to begin to talk about recycling, you know, regularly with our residents, through educational programs, and the consumer needs to begin to understand that they are part of this effort, unless they just want to pay whatever the prices are, that the market will bear in any given market. And maybe that is, maybe the convenience of that is what people will be willing to do. I don't know that, but, so, we need to be able to communicate... But, so, so we need to be able to communicate that there are opportunities to change consumer behavior that will help us to avoid the creation of products that we either have to throw away or recycle. I mean, I look at what the internet's done with, I get a box this big with all of the fluffy stuff inside to hold something this large. So, and that comes to my house every day now. I didn't five years ago. And then what do you do with everything except the product that's in the box, that's inside the box with the stuffing? That's convenient, and that's the way we shop, but that also on the other end now may not be, depending on the market, or some portion of it, may not be recyclable. So are we willing to pay to get rid of that now, an added cost to the consumer? So we need to educate people on this. They need to think about it. They need to make their choices. And we'll provide whatever service they, they are willing to accept. But I know that cost increases are never something that is easily accepted. On the, on the other side of that, that plastic, unless we can get somebody to take that, which I can't imagine why they wouldn't if they're shipping stuff all the time, that stuff that we, they put inside to fill it, there's got to be a reuse for that. But right now, if you throw it away, you got to put it in the waste stream. You throw regular plastics away, you got to put, you have, they're getting thrown away. There isn't a market for them. So we got to educate people on that as well. That's all. And it takes time.
Do we have any idea of how much glass is thrown out that actually has a deposit on it?
We don't, no.
Okay.
No, but we could probably run a test to see, you know, we could, we could do some tests and then be able to kind of extrapolate what a ton, if we should, you know, looked at a, however much, and then translate that into, okay, how much of it might be in the total waste stream. But again, education. Let's, let's, let's throw those not in the bin, not in the trash, not in the recycling bin, but let's take them over to the redeemable trailer and get rid of them there. And most of the time, once people think about it, unless they're in a hurry, we got to make it convenient for them, but, you know, they're willing to do it. But we have to educate. So I think a big part of waste stream reduction is education and then getting the consumer to modify behavior, quite honestly. Yep.
Councilor Flores?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, item number three, the discussions that you have been having with Vineyard Wind relative to a host agreement. If that cable actually does come through Lewis Bay and does exit on New Hampshire, it's being suggested that obviously it's going to traverse through pretty much all of precinct one up through Comocord Heights into Independence Park. Is the host agreement, when you say that you're looking to get authorization, what actually is going to be in the host agreement?
They're going to lay out their routes. They're going to, they're going to have mitigation in there relevant to the various, various area, like at Kovels Beach, if they want to land there, there's mitigation relevant to that. They lay out their routes. How they repair the roadways post-construction will be laid out in detail. There are several routes if you go back and look. I, I don't know which, I don't know where they want to land specifically. I know the three locations that they've spoken about. They have several routes, some of them south of the midcape, some of them north, I believe. If they come in at Kovels, it might be a completely different route, so.
In my understanding, having attended the meetings in Yarmouth, specifically, they wanted to come through Lewis Bay, exit on New Hampshire as opposed to Kovels Beach, and then come basically along the bike trail and then into, follow the railroad tracks into Independence Park. So that obviously goes directly through Comocord Heights. It goes through a neighborhood in precinct one, so there's going to have to be some type of communication with those neighbors to be sure that they clearly understand what the impact is going to be in terms of construction, in terms of design. And I know that in Yarmouth, they were asking for somewhere close to $75,000 as mitigation money to even begin to think about signing a host agreement. I know Vineyard Wind came back and offered the $10,000. I'm not sure where that's going. But bottom line is that we have to be sure that if in fact it does progress to the point where we as the town of Barnstable, signing a host agreement to agree to allow that cable to come through Comocord Heights in precinct one into, into Independence Park, that we need to be 100% secure and positive that A, it's not going to be disruptive, if you will, for the, for the lifestyle of those folks in Comocord Heights. Coupled with, I'm very concerned about building that substation in Independence Park with all of the other problems that we've had with the water supply for Hyannis, that I don't want to see any kinds of issues. I know that they say that the engineering is going to guarantee that nothing could happen, but I would expect them to say nothing less than that. So I just want to be sure that we cross Ts and dot Is relative to allowing that cable and ultimately that substation to come into Independence Park. Thank you.
Any other councilors?
All right. Thank you, Mark. Vice President Crocker, could we please act on the minutes of August 9th, 2018, please?
Thank you.
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. President. In our packets tonight, we have town council meeting minutes from August 9th, 2018. I rise to move them as drafted.
You have a second? All those in favor of the minutes of the town council meeting on August 9th, 2018? And that is, and two abstentions. Got that? Okay. All right. Council Communications, any announcements or updates from anyone? Council Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for the sake of information to the public before I make my, my other comment, is that when there's something up on the big screen that is for you to see more clearly and also for the people at home to be able to pick up, we all have these monitors up here that we're looking at. Sometimes they'll look at us, it looks like we're not paying any attention to anything anybody's saying. So I just wanted to let you know about that. The other thing is I wanted to give a shout out to the police department. I've gotten several comments from the public. Many families suffer with either individuals or family crisis that has to do with mental health issues. And just recently, again, the police department responded. I know they've had special training to work with folks suffering from mental illness. But kudos to our police department. Thank you for your compassionate and professional response to those suffering with mental illness. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Dagewa?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I thought that the Unity Day this year was a great success again, and it was nice, it was a nice turnout. And just to kind of give our police department and the young men who sponsor the Unity Day each year, that this is the third year of it, and it's growing, and it's something that our community needs for people to come out and have a good time interacting. The cost is free to come out and bring your children, and I saw all generations out there this year, which is a nice thing to see. A lot of elderly out there this year as well. So again, kudos to the young men and the police department on a successful Unity Day, August 3rd.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Vice President Crocker?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ostwell Village Association had its annual meeting last night, and we were blessed to have a presentation by DPW staff and architect Mark Mariachi and Jean-Paul. We were also grateful to have Lynn and Patty in our presence to answer a number of questions regarding the Bay School build-out and the potential as we continue to design a community building to service the west side of Barnstable. Great job on their part, and a lot of questions were answered. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Councilor Schnep?
Thank you. I'd like to give a shout out to our Barnstable Little League Under-10 Team. They not only have, Matt, Matt can probably help me on this, but last weekend, they won the Northeast Regional Championships. And that means they beat all the other state teams in the New England area. So I think we have a team to watch in the next couple of years. So congratulations to them.
Thank you for that. Councilor Lebec?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just dovetail, the reason why that's kind of a big deal is if they do that in two years, they go to the Little League World Series. So do keep an eye on that group. My nephew's on that group. So a lot of it's fun to watch, and I've had the privilege to coach some of those young men past years. So it's, it is fun to watch. I actually happened to be there when they won it that Friday night, so it was a good time. Had by all. The other thing I did want to mention is that September 9th is the Marston's Mills Village Day, taking place in the center, the metropolis of Marston's Mills. And there will be all sorts of activities. There'll be a grill going, bars will be there, from my understanding, serving chowder. There'll be burger flipping, hot dog grilling. There'll be entertainment from the Mike Dumas Band, who, if you haven't seen them, they're definitely a catch and a great, great entertainers. And so lots to be had. And there'll be a barbecue chicken dinner afterwards. And all of the proceeds go to fund scholarships for Barnstable resident, I should say, Marston's Mills resident senior graduates, whatever they, high school they choose to attend. And last year, we were able to give $4,000 scholarships from the money raised from that day. So that coupled with a couple of the fundraisers that you'll be hearing about as the year goes by. But again, September 9th starts at 12 o'clock and goes to four, and then the barbecue chicken dinners thereafter. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Councilor Wallace?
Thank you. As I stated at the last meeting, the West Barnstable Village Festival will be held on Saturday. However, if it does rain, we have a rain date for Sunday. So all of those that want to line up at the Dunk Tank where I will be seated, you have two chances, and we look to see all of you there then. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Councilor Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President. While we're giving shout-outs to events, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that this coming Sunday on August 19th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., the Barnstable Historical Society will be sponsoring the Summer Splash at the Barnstable Tavern. It'll be a fun event fundraiser for the, for the historical society's house, the old Lothr House across the street from the Sturgis Library. And then a few days later, on August 22nd, from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m., the Barnstable Village Association will be sponsoring their annual summer stroll in the village. And that's always a fun event. There's always usually a free ice cream at Smitty's if you sing Sweet Caroline. There's usually oysters over at Robert Paul Real Estate. Killen Grover does something, Bayview does something. So every, every individual business on 6A in that area sponsors some kind of activity. I usually give out balloons to the kids. So it's a fun day. And then at 6:30, there'll be the concert with Pam Pryor up on the hill in front of the old jail. So if you're in the neighborhood, August 19th, the Summer Splash, and August 22nd, the Summer Stroll. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other councilors? All right. We're going to move into the orders of the day. We're going to go, I'm going to start with our planning board. Welcome our planning board for being here tonight. Vice President Crocker, could you please read and open the public hearing on 2019-015, please?
Door number four. Mr. President, under old business, I would ask that we open a joint public hearing with the planning board, which will require a two-thirds vote at its completion. 2019-015, amending chapter 240 of the zoning ordinance to add regulations for establishing and operating registered recreational marijuana cultivator, cultivators, research facilities, and independent testing laboratories, and prohibiting all other non-medical marijuana establishments, as written.
Second.
You have a second? Madam Chair, would you open your public hearing?
Thank you. I'm going to open up the, the planning board portion of the meeting, which is, I'll call this meeting to order, and then I'll do an introduction. My name is Mary Barry as chair, and I'll go right down the table.
Good evening. Fred LaSilva.
Good evening. Patrick Forn.
Good evening. Stephen Hellman.
Good evening. Jeffrey Schwartz.
Hi, I'm Paul Kroll.
Great, thank you very much. At this point, I'll ask for a, what's on the table right now is item number 2019-015, and I will ask for a motion to open the public hearing. Can I have a second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, public hearing's open. Thank you.
Great, thank you, and welcome again. All right, so we're going to start the public hearing. I'd like everyone to be respectful of everyone's time and try to limit your comments to three minutes. I do want to start with one individual, though couldn't be here at our workshop. It's Mike Ross from Prince Lobel Law Firm. He's actually pinch hitting today for Dan Linsky, retired police chief, who was going to be here tonight, but he had a family emergency. And so Mike's going to give Dan's presentation, and basically he's giving some comments on the security around the industry and some general licensing. So I'll give you a few extra minutes, but welcome. Just want to make sure you're green lights on the microphone.
There we go.
State your name on the microphone.
My name's Mike Ross. I am an attorney at the law firm of Prince Lobel. Thank you, members of the council and planning board. As you mentioned, I'm pinch hitting for Dan Linsky, who was supposed to give his presentation. We've been invited to give an industry perspective for what's happening in this industry. Unfortunately, Dan's father-in-law is, is passing today, and so I'm going to do my best. I'm a, but Dan is the former chief of Boston Police Department. He is also now in this space with Kroll advising companies as a security consultant. I'm a attorney at Prince Lobel. I'm a former member of the Boston City Council, so I come here with respect for the work you do. We are, in full disclosure, we, we do have people who are interested in, in opening here, but that's not my, my purpose here today. I was just going to try to add some context to your meeting. And so this, I'm just going to run you through a, a presentation here. Presently, there are no applications in Barnstable County, but there are a couple hundred applications pending throughout Massachusetts. I can break down those numbers a little bit more here. There are actually 2,200 applications in some way, shape, or form right now in Massachusetts. There's about 219 pending, meaning some form of that application was actually filled out, but not all of it. And as I mentioned, there are only, well, there are only 12 provisional licenses that have been granted by the CCC for adult-use cannabis. There are, of the 95 completed applications, there are 95 complete applications, there are, those represent 52 companies. At some point, I think people think there are going to be about 200 to 300 companies all in. And this is just some data on, on the, the medical program in the DPH. It's interesting, there's 15, about 15,000, I'm sorry, didn't bring my glasses here. Excuse me one second. I just want to make sure I hit this number right. I'm sorry. There are, there are about 57,000 total patients right now in Massachusetts, active in just for medical, and about, just the latest number, about 32,000 patient visits in the last full month. That's for the, the medical marijuana program. Obviously, it stands to reason that when, when these open in the respective states across the country, there is a precipitous drop in arrests for marijuana. I mean, this is intuitive. When you legalize something, you stop arresting for that. And so this is probably why that statistic looks like that. However, there is some really remarkable information coming out right now with regard to enforcement. And, and I just want to kind of blast through a couple quick. You know, very reputable newspapers and publications are writing about what's happening across the country. And there's a lot of growing body of research that's talking about drops in youth consumption and drops in opiate addiction. And that's somewhat counterintuitive because you're introducing a new stream of, you know, of cannabis, frankly, into an environment. Why would opiate addiction drop? Why would youth drop? And just, you could read it on your own, but the, the, the top line is that when you, when you regulate something, you make it harder to get. It's harder for young people to get a regulated substance than it is to get a prohibited, prohibited substance. And that's what speaks to the youth issue. And with opiates, there are more people getting on the regimentation of cannabis as an alternative to a pill that might ultimately get them involved with... with an opiate. And so it's an alternative, and it's creating a different stream of people who are not getting addicted to the opiates. And there's some really interesting writing on it. When you introduce a dispensary or a cultivation into a community, there are substantial benefits to that community. Obviously, there's jobs. Many of the dispensaries are offering local preferences on hiring. My client is doing that. There is a host community agreement that's inked with the local town. There's a 3% tax revenue that goes into the local community, and then there's also the amount that would be up to about 3% for the host community agreement. So in Massachusetts, they're predicting $216 million in state revenue in the first two years. In California, they've projected $350 million in their first year of sales. Colorado has already, year-to-date, seen almost $800 million in tax revenue. Washington State, 742. And so there's substantial funds going into the state. What does that mean for a community? The number that I, I just looked at my own number. If it was to, if we were to open one dispensary, we had roughed out $360,000 a year in year five. If we had did a dispensary and cultivation, it would be $780,000, $780,000 a year by year five, just to the local community. A couple other studies that just Dan Linsky wanted us to present is that, it's interesting, if you look at some of the border states, border states of the United States, they're seeing drops, a 13% drop in crime, in violent crime on border states. And they're attributing, this is an article in Forbes Magazine, they're attributing it to a drop in the number of cartels that are carrying over cannabis illegally across the border. And so they're attributing some of the success to the dropping crime on the border states to legalizing cannabis. This is an interesting study that, it looked at the border of Oregon and Washington, whereas Washington, it was legal in 2013 and 14, in Oregon, it was not. And they looked at the bordering counties in each one of these states. And they did a two-year analysis before it was legal in Washington, and then two years after it was legal in Washington. And to a county, they saw a disparate behavior in terms of crime, in terms of, and the quote from the report says it caused a significant reduction in rapes and property crimes on the Washington side of the border in 2013 and 14, relative to the Oregon side, relative to the same set of years on these abutting counties. And why was this drop in Washington but not in, they attributing it in this report to cannabis? And why would they, well, for one thing, the police had a lot more time available to them to work on other crimes. They were not chasing cannabis crimes. The other thing is just the effects of cannabis. You know, people who are taking cannabis tend not to do violent crimes. That's in this report. They're just not as violent as someone who might be consuming alcohol, cocaine, or amphetamines, or some of the other real toxic, noxious drugs that are out there. And then there are other factors. It's a very interesting report, looking at these sets of counties. There's other reports, I have, time is limited. Just a word about Dan Linsky. This was one of the most opposed members of citizens of Massachusetts not too long ago. He stood on the steps of the Massachusetts State House with a bunch of other chiefs, and stood out there and said that in 2012, if this were to pass, it would be the beginning of the end here in Massachusetts. And he believed it. He really believed it. This is a law-and-order guy that, you know, never in his life smoked and thought it was a, would really be a bad thing. He had, after his retirement from the Boston Police Department, he had a family friend who lived nearby him, who didn't have any other relatives, and he took care of her as she was dying from cancer. And her favorite thing was to go to get fried clams at Sully's, and she couldn't even do that. So he started to think, you know, maybe there's something to this. And since then, he's joined Kroll, and it's a very reputable security firm, who made the conscious decision of getting behind this as a client. And he's changed his position on this. He would tell you that. And so what he did is he reached out to the different, he wanted to reach out to the different, his colleagues, his former colleagues throughout Massachusetts that have adopted this. And he checked in with a few different communities. And I just literally cut and paste some of the email communication that he had. He reached out to Newton, in the context of the dispensary that they had on Washington Street in Newton, near the Mass Pike. And they had a precipitous drop of, they didn't have any, I forgot, reporting or crimes that they were concerned about whatsoever. And in fact, they discontinued the police detail that was committed for this dispensary very soon, after the first several months that they had opened. In Brookline, this is a letter here from the town of Brookline, that's the one that's on Route 9, the old Brookline Bank over there in Brookline. They too saw limited calls relating to the dispensary, and they were actually able to solve a more serious crime using one of the cameras of the Brookline dispensary, because they're faced out into the street. And that, and they didn't say it. In Salem, this is, again, a report back from the Salem Police Department, Lieutenant Mary Barubi, and she said, quote, "You wouldn't even know they were operating in our community dispensing medical marijuana." And so when that dispensary came and went before the town again, they granted them the right to sell adult use. In Quincy, and I'll just point out, Salem was the first in the state for medical. Quincy was one of the first in the states for medical. These are in your presentations. You'll have a little bit more time to look at it. But this one here shows a decrease in 50% from 2016, before the dispensary was open, to 2017, after the dispensary was open. These highlighted items here all represent a substantial decrease, a 50% decrease, including drug offenses in Quincy, once it was open within one mile of the dispensary. And then let me just end, this is my last slide. Let me just end with North Glenn, Colorado. It's interesting. I had a client who used to talk about North Glenn, and North Glenn's very close to Denver. That's the state of Colorado, the square box is the state of Colorado, so trying to represent it. And it's right near Denver, North Glenn. North Glenn was one of these yes communities. And the rest of the surrounding communities around North Glenn were no communities. They voted against it. And I tried to depict, this isn't exactly the scale, but they're close, actually. And the red is on the, outside of the state now, the red is North Glenn. In 2013, they voted for it. What started to happen in these surrounding communities is they all were looking at their neighbor making tons of revenue and not having any sets of issues. And so they, one at a time, wound up, 2014, 2015, you can see the dates, adopting their own regime to allow for adult use. You know, the people who are most against it, even they were saying, you know what, this isn't so bad. This is actually a good thing. There's, you know, we're not seeing problems. We're seeing drops in crimes. We're seeing revenue come in. And this makes sense. I mean, there's, you know, a thousand ways to do this, and you're thinking about that, and you're contemplating that. If I can be a resource, if Dan Linsky can be a resource, we remain ready to do so. I appreciate the opportunity to present.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate you pinch hitting for Dan, and please give him our best.
Will do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I was going to read this before Mike, but I know he just rushed down from Boston, so I wanted to be respectful of his time. But I just wanted to give, before we continue on with the public hearing, I just want to give a quick kind of background rationale, how we ended up with item 2019-015. So, following the issuance of the final draft regulations by the Cannabis Control Commission, the Town Council began the public process of addressing non-medical marijuana zoning within the town of Barnstable in March of 2018, which is the workshop that I referred to earlier. Since that time, there have been several hearings and opportunities to hear from the public, the planning board, and the Town Council. In addition to the public comments received in drafting this article, planning and economic issues were also considered. The zones identified were determined to be appropriate for the proposed uses and in need of new real estate investment and new growth redevelopment opportunities. The leadership of the council also sought feedback from the council representing the zoning districts that are identified. Based on the information gathered, the council leadership has drafted this article for discussion in an effort to address and balance the broad range of issues and concerns that have been raised during the public process with the hope of bringing this process to a reasonable and responsible conclusion for the town of Barnstable. So we'll continue on with the public hearing. Who's next?
Adam Hanson, Precinct 3. It's, that presentation was pretty good. It's almost as if we've been lied to about marijuana. I mean, geez, I thought it was bad, but whatever. Moving on. All right, so I come from Hyannis. Not really, but I come from off Cape. I live here now. So I drive around Hyannis every day, and I see vacant buildings for years sitting there. North Street, Stevens Street, the old VFW by the Rotary, by the Willow Street, off of Main Street. There's a bunch over by North Street. I mean, the business, they want to come to Barnstable. They want to work with the police department. They want to work with the schools department. I don't know that many street drug dealers that want to work with the police department or the schools department. The industry does. And they want to come to Barnstable. It makes, most of Hyannis voted for this. Let's, let the free market rule. Let it go to Hyannis. Put it in North Street, Stevens Street. All over Hyannis. Let's, I mean, light a fire under it, because the industry's going to move us, past us if we don't vote for this. They're going to leave us in the dust. And we're going to be like those Colorado towns that go, two, three years from now, going, we should have voted yeah, but, you know? So it's crazy how it's such a culture that it's ingrained in our heads that this is a bad thing. And we've been taught that our whole life. The DARE program, the War on Drug, Nixon's Public Enemy Number One. It's all lies. It's all misinformation. It's not a bad product. It helps people. You know, if you don't have retail, let's put a moratorium on retail for a year. I'll be happy with that. I'll go to Brewster, Plymouth. Doesn't matter. But the industry as a whole wants to come here. And we shouldn't restrict them to little tiny zones around the airport and the industrial park. Let them go to Hyannis. Open it up. It's a free market. You know, it's not that tough to see the economic benefit that this will directly impact the town. I mean, that hundreds of thousands of dollars that can go for, you know, the football uniforms, another cop detail for this, you know, drainage for that road. It makes sense to have it in town. We're the hub of Barnstable, you know, the county. All roads lead to Hyannis. It just makes sense. It's not a bad drug. It's just, it comes, really comes down to personal responsibility, just like with alcohol. It's just, it doesn't show, it's not violent. You're not violent when you're doing it. You might be a knucklehead, but you're not a violent knucklehead. But it's just, it's not, we've been lied to about this plant for years and years and years. And it's just, it's going to take a while for it to break down, to get it fresh in our head that, hey, this thing's not that bad. You know? It's not that bad. So, and I can't wait for it to be in Hyannis. I can't wait to see the economic growth spewing out from this industry. And these things are going to be built like Fort Knox. Kids aren't going to be off the street walking in. You're going to need ID tags. There's going to be security guards, double gates, locks, cameras, the whole gambit. It's all going to be here. If we zone it for certain areas of town that are super tiny, super small, we're hamstringing the industry before it even set foot in town. Open it up. It's not a bad thing. We shouldn't delay it anymore. We should just go for it. You know, sometimes the best thing to do is just to jump right in. So, all right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening. My name is Spencer Knowles, Regulate Cape Cod. Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, and council members. We started this dialogue officially when I introduced myself to the group on a cold February evening, and here we are on a hot, humid evening in mid-August. We have come a long way since February, but I wanted to focus on tonight where we are now. I would like to commend the cosponsors of this latest article, Mr. Stein Hilber and Mr. Crocker, for their evolution of thought, starting with an all-out ban on entire industry, and now seeking to allow for certain license types. However, we are still banning others, potentially. Some important questions come to mind. What caused this evolution of thought? We hope the counselors will provide further insight into this this evening. Is it in truly support of small business? We'd like to think it is. And if that is the case, we respectfully ask that you all consider allowing all of the non-consumer-facing license types to take shape in Barnstable and truly support your friends and neighbors within the small business community. Where do all the counselors stand on this issue, and why? We hope to hear from all members of this body for their reasoning and their upcoming vote. Most importantly, I ask you to consider the Cape Codders that are here tonight, representing license types that you are seeking to allow, but also to ban. These are real people who would like a chance to start a legitimate business here in Barnstable, just like any other regulated business, a package store, a brewery, et cetera. Sitting behind me are members of a potential craft cultivation cooperative, a product manufacturing micro-business, and an independent retailer. All would be local in this town. It's a true snapshot of the potential local supply chain network. Think about this just for one second. This town has the ability to have an industry that could provide jobs for all these sectors, have products start from seed and end with a taxed and regulated sale to responsible adults only. An entire industry with all its supply chain tiers working together without leaving this town. The public safety component cannot be understated. The illicit market will never check IDs, ladies and gentlemen. They will never collaborate with our public safety officials. They will never ensure that all products are safe and tested. And we can assure you, they will never pay taxes, agree to a host community agreement, and support any level of drug prevention and education. A regulated industry will do all of these things. It is that simple. In closing, please remember that it's vital that we all understand that a ban is not a moratorium. And this body has a tremendous opportunity not to only be proactive, but also progressive by establishing a temporary moratorium on the license types you are least comfortable with, yet prepared to support based on the current climate within this town. Use this time to establish a cannabis advisory group, to study the industry as it takes shape before taking any action towards an all-out ban on any license type. Thank you for your time and continued engagement with our group during this very important issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi. I'm Jason Cullenan. I'm an Iraq War veteran, also an entrepreneur, and a former addict from my meds. I just want to attest to the powerful benefits that cannabis was able to deliver for me. I was dependent on my meds for about six years, opiates, antidepressants, and sleep meds. Some of those withdrawal symptoms were terrible. I want to remind everyone that most veterans and most people in government or prior government officials don't like to be on any list or any database. So trying cannabis or getting my medical card was really something I was not interested in even trying. So I tried it from a trusted relative and friend, and it worked tremendously for my sleeping, the inflammation, the pain. It's non-addictive. I could go to work out of state, not use it for a week. But I think the harm, I mean, if you look at the VA stance, or even the Veterans Foreign Awards or the American Legion, all three have changed their tone and all support cannabis at this point. I think the harm is overblown, in all honesty, judging from prior legalized meds that were delivered from a doctor. It's hands down, it's not harmful. I'm also an entrepreneur. And of course, Barnstable looks like a great place to host such a business, whether it's an edibles manufacturing business, or a single mom that's saying at home makes a good cookie. I just want to remind everyone of all those different licenses and opportunities for the members of the public that we may forget about. And that's about it. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good day.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Anyone else wish to speak?
Jack Anderson, Precinct 4. Thank you for the opportunity. I've enjoyed hearing all the information that's been presented. I'm not the most articulate person on this. Other people are going to make better arguments, but I do have one point that I think needs to be brought out, and that is, there's such a thing as medical marijuana, but there's not such a thing as medical alcohol. Your doctor's not going to say, "I want you to go home and have a few drinks tonight." Maybe they do. Mine certainly hasn't. And I think that the evidence is certainly clear that alcohol is more destructive medically and just in general to the social fabric, potentially. So the point is, if you are, have something that is more restrictive for marijuana than for alcohol, I think you're doing something wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Thank you very much. My name is Asia Atwood, and Councilor Flores. We met a couple weeks ago. I'm actually a resident in Mashpee. However, my family, my in-laws, they live and they reside in Hyannis. My wife actually went to Barnstable High, and she was part of that dynamic women's volleyball team that kicked butt for several years. I just wanted to brag about that real quick. Her family has been here for several years. They're great in-laws. They love me, they support me and my endeavors, and they are starting to understand that the cannabis industry and the benefits that it has for them as well are vast. So they're shifting. I'm also the co-founder and the CEO of an agricultural technology company, startup company called Trelle Technologies. We designed a device, and I'm only explaining this to you so that you understand the level of innovation that we're dealing with here. We've designed a device that will automatically train a tall plant to grow horizontally versus vertically. This is to be used so that you can grow up tall plants in a short space, so that you can stack them and make the most out of your space, sustainability and efficiency. It's for tall plants, fruit-bearing plants, that includes tomatoes, eggplants, peppers, and yes, cannabis sativa as well. We've developed a device. It works. We have prototypes available, but we're going to have to grow all those types of plants, including cannabis, in order to make sure that our design meets the needs of our customers. So we're going to need a space to grow, safely and securely, for product testing purposes. We're not classified as a research facility because we're not going to be blessed by the CCC to be a research facility, and we're not a cooperative, so we're going to have to go out and get a recreational cultivation license just to grow a few plants for product development. We don't plan to sell it. Currently, we have access to a spot in Bourne. It's a small lot of land in a commercial zone, but it's not zoned for cannabis, so we're going to have to figure something out as we expand. As the CEO, I have to think ahead. I have to make decisions, and I have to say to myself, "Where's the best place with the most likelihood for us to have success to acquire a lot of land that is properly zoned for cannabis, just so I can grow a few plants for product testing purposes?" Now, we don't need to grow a lot of cannabis plants. As I mentioned, it's designed for multiple plants. We just need to grow a few. When I look at the current proposed zones in the map, the space and the real estate opportunities seem minimal to me. I see that it's mostly for medicinal use, and by the time we're ready to expand, it will probably be jam-packed and competitive. So the likelihood of us staying on Cape Cod is slim to none. We're a young company, but we're already, and we already have our company values, which include being a socially responsible company that makes crazy innovative technology. We would love to work with 4Cs. We need interns. We need employees. We're offering jobs. Both my co-founder and I are teaching-type of people. We like mentoring. We want to share our knowledge. We want to create opportunities for others. But we're focusing on the 495 Beltway in Boston. I may have to relocate, so we may take all of that opportunity with us when we leave. If we're truly accepting to new business, small businesses, businesses using innovation and technology, businesses which will create opportunities, we're going to have to be far more inclusive and make decisions based on fact and not fear. So, to conclude, let me share some quick data. There's already been a lot of that already. There's an amazing group in our state called the Cannabis Community Care and Research Network. You may have heard of them. They're focusing their efforts on cannabis, and they've already started a survey to learn more about how people use cannabis among other topics. The survey's not complete yet, but they shared some of their information for a sneak peek. Out of nearly a thousand respondents, actually over a thousand respondents, 62% of them said they were reducing their prescription medication use with cannabis. It's not about getting high. It's about saving and improving the quality of life. We understand it's new, but it's only new to us. Canada, Israel, among other countries are pushing full throttle on cannabis, and they're not becoming violent, they're still productive, and they're not overdosing on cannabis. So I ask you, I implore you, please think ahead to the possibilities because the past is behind us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hello. My name is Deacon Crocker, Precinct 1. My family has owned a farm in West Barnstable since 1634. Over the last 384 years, our farm has gotten a lot smaller. However, we have been able to keep some of our original land and currently grow organic vegetables on it. Together with our butter, we have about 15 acres that can only be accessed by a road that we own, and is out of view from public roads. We're looking for ways to keep what is left of our land and are looking to grow a more viable crop. We believe that cannabis is that crop. Though personally, I have not used cannabis products, I have a great passion for growing it because I have seen its wide-reaching benefits help many people that are close to me. Its medicinal benefits are not beliefs, rather they are scientific facts. As we know, the Cannabis Commission has tried to make a place for local farmers in the industry. If the committee in Barnstable would like to see its local farmers continue to farm here, then I would ask that you would consider expanding your zoning to include actual farmland, whether through special permit or otherwise. I'm here to speak about cultivating, but I should be known that I support all cannabis businesses in the town. My family's history here is vast, but it's your own, it's Barnstable's own history, and we would be very grateful for your support in helping us remain here in the town that we love. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi. Thank you for taking the opportunity to listen to me for a few minutes tonight. My name is Michelle. I'm from Falmouth, and I'm looking to do manufacturing. So the proposed ban of certain businesses that do not deal with the public is something I think you should really reconsider, really consider that thoroughly, because we need manufacturing to put into dispensaries. Not everyone smokes. Not everyone wants to ingest their medicine that way. And having cultivators is very important because manufacturers cannot take their products and make their products without the cultivators. So relocating a farm is something that really needs to be considered as well. Not everybody grows indoors to grow organically. Like I said, cultivation is important. Manufacturing is important as a medical front to put these things into dispensaries throughout the state and hopefully here in Barnstable. This is where I would like to bring my company instead of having to go off Cape. You know, I'm a fifth-generation Cape Codder, born and raised in Falmouth. My children's sixth generation, and it's more convenient for me, and I would like to keep the tax revenue here on the Cape rather than putting it in some other town. With that, not only do we need the cultivators, but we need the research and labs. Again, another license type that doesn't deal with the public, doesn't have, you know, customers coming and going from their stores, everything is safe and secure, but it goes from cultivation to manufacturing to labs and testing to make sure that everything is done in a very healthy, safe, and secure way for people to get their medicine. So I really strongly suggest that you council members, as well as the planning board for zoning, reconsider the bans, as well as consider locations for the cultivation. Thank you.
Could you just state your full name, please?
Yes. Sorry, my name's Michelle Bennett.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening. My name is John Pomeroy. I'd like to begin by submitting a letter to you all, if I could. I'm not sure if I should take one. Thank you again. My name is John Pomeroy. Typically, so the reason I'm here is I'm actually here to read a letter written by Arthur J. Luke. Traditionally, I work for Arthur J. Luke and some of his liquor stores, including two right here in Hyannis. I've been speaking on behalf of them, but tonight I'm speaking on behalf of him. Regrettably, he could not be here tonight. He had to be elsewhere this evening, so he asked me to read this letter that he produced. "To the Town Councilors of Barnstable. My name is Arthur J. Luke, lifelong resident and longtime business owner on Cape Cod. I'm writing this letter as a Cape Cod resident, husband, father, and business owner to implore you to consider your options before deciding on a ban of this new cannabis industry because it goes way beyond just a pot shop. There's an entire supply chain to consider here, one that we could foster locally, allowing industry to buy local from locals, which we all support. I've worked with alcoholic beverages for the entirety of my adult life, from working in my dad's package stores to now owning four licensed establishments on the Cape, including two right here in Hyannis. Suffice to say, I have a lot of experience working with controlled substances. As there aren't many industries on the Cape more regulated with stricter operational and security controls than that of the alcoholic beverage industry, I feel my viewpoint on this issue is unique and valuable. I write this to make it clear that I would ultimately intend to operate a recreational cannabis license here in the town of Barnstable, specifically an independent retail operation with no aspirations of vertical integration, as it would be my goal to partner with local suppliers and manufacturers, the people in this room, my Cape Cod friends and neighbors. Those who have ever tried that old Luke's brand creme de menthe can tell you that I'm much better at retail than I am at production. Fortunately, I wouldn't rely on my skills in that arena, but instead, as we do with alcohol, we would rely on local businesses and experts creating jobs and supporting the local economy in the process. Our store slogan is 'Family-Owned and Locally Operated,' and this has served us extremely well, not purely as a tagline, but as a credo. Because our businesses are run by people that live here who understand our community-specific needs and quirks, this extends to our preferred partnerships with local businesses as it would in this new cannabis industry. This self-sustaining, locally-based economy is not something I saw coming at first. I voted no on question four, but once I started educating myself, I saw the true potential here. For almost 100 years, this industry has been miscategorized, vilified, and forced under criminal control because of racism and misinformation. That's indeed a tragedy, but is not only one that we can correct, but also profit from. Our Cape Cod community needs this industry. We need to eliminate criminal control and provide a helpful, healthy alternative to opioids and other more damaging substances. We can literally bring the manufacturing and farming industries back to Cape Cod. However, this will not be possible under the bans and restrictive zoning you're proposing in tonight's agenda. All the data coming from legalized states are proving how the legal cannabis industry is a boon for the communities that foster it. Taxes and host agreements alone are a huge financial benefit, but I think the largest economic benefit is in the full supply chain, from the craft cultivators and micro-businesses to the independent retailers, to the many non-cannabis ancillary businesses such as HVAC companies, electricians, plumbers, et cetera, that will thrive with an entirely new industry flourishing in Barnstable, the business hub of the Cape. However, if data from other states isn't enough for you to make the right decision right here, I implore you to enact a moratorium, not a ban. A ban is a permanent action, not appropriate for the wait-and-see strategy this council apparently desires. A moratorium will allow you the time to study this industry more and set up an ad hoc committee to explore the benefits as well as the risks. I think you'll find, as I did, the risks are minimal and the benefits greatly outweigh. So I, as a potential retailer, am officially asking you to enact a moratorium on retail only and allow the other non-consumer-facing business types to move forward. During this time, I encourage the town to conduct its due diligence, fully researching this opportunity before taking drastic action. I would also like to officially volunteer my time and resources to assist you in this exploration, just as I've done as an alcoholic beverage retailer and as I would do as a cannabis retailer. I thank you for your time and appreciate you allowing me to share my thoughts. Please take them into consideration before taking any action, especially a permanent one like a ban, which could forever damage the potential of this industry on Cape Cod. Sincerely, Arthur J. Luke." I would like to add, I've worked for Arthur J. Luke for 14 years, and working with controlled substances closely. I began as a 17-year-old boy, working what we colloquially called the bottle kid position, recycling cans and stuff, and here I am 14 years later, wine buyer for a prominent liquor store chain, senior member of management, supporting a family on my income from a controlled substance community. This is something, this is a reality that can also be replicated in the cannabis industry. I strongly support that as an example of someone that can come from not a lot and succeed because of a well-run, controlled industry. I think, I think this is important, and that's why I'm more than willing to put my reputation on the line for Arthur. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi. My name is Ashlyn Plunkett, and I work for Sierra Naturals. Sierra is one of the largest producers and retailers of medical marijuana in Massachusetts. We operate dispensaries in Cambridge, Somerville, and Needham, and a 30,000-square-foot cultivation and manufacturing facility in the town of Milford. While Sierra has no intention of operating in Barnstable, I speak today for the purpose of helping the council and the community here understand some of the impacts of hosting a cultivation and/or marijuana manufacturing facility. Sierra has been a proud member of the Milford community since November 2013. We occupy a nondescript warehouse in an industrial park, and our building generally keeps a low profile in our neighborhood. Most Milford residents do not even know we are there. Facilities such as ours are governed by strict regulations that provide for a high level of security. During the nearly five years we have been in Milford, operating 24 hours a day, seven days a week, we have not experienced a single adverse law enforcement or public health and safety issue. During our initial siting proposals, there were some in Milford who were afraid that if a marijuana cultivation or manufacturing facility were cited in the community, that property values would go down, crime would go up, and our presence would be a significant detriment to the health and safety of the community. I am gratified to report that in five years, none of those predictions have come true. We believe that Sierra has become a meaningful benefit to the Milford community in many ways. Sierra is an active member of the Milford Chamber of Commerce. I am personally a member of the Board of Directors and an active participant in chamber activities and events. Sierra is a regular contributor to a variety of community activities in addition to our role with the chamber. Sierra has donated to local institutions such as the Milford Youth Center, the Milford Medal of Honor Awards, which grants medals to the families of all Milford residents who died in service to our country, and to the Claflin Hill Orchestra, a local orchestra that produces a year-round family event series, just to name a few. The Sierra-Milford facility employs roughly 65 people. These are high-paying jobs that require training that we provide. We employ supply chain managers, lab technicians, food scientists, horticultural experts, and administrative support. Our employees start at $15 an hour and go into the six-figure salary range. We also support a local hiring preference to give jobs to qualified members of our Milford community first. When you read in the papers about the relationship between municipalities and cannabis companies, the discussion is often centered around how much money a town can receive from a community host agreement. While these payments are of value to the community, we like to think that our biggest contribution comes in being a responsible stakeholder in the civic life and spirit of the community. Thank you for allowing me to share our experience in Milford.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Thank you to the Town Council and the Planning Board for continuing this conversation and welcoming public comment. My name is Beth Waterfall, and I am the Executive Director of an organization. It's a nonprofit organization, completely volunteer-run, called Elevate Northeast, and we're focused on educating people working in the cannabis industry and also community outreach. My family home is in Dennis, and I've been coming to Barnstable since I was a baby. Mini golf, penny candy, all that stuff. I love it here, and I want what's best for it. Two years ago, 2016, Massachusetts voters, as we all know, passed question four, opening doors to a multi-billion-dollar industry and thousands of jobs surrounding the science, cultivation, processing, use, and enjoyment of an herb, a plant. Two years later, I ask you, what are you afraid of? And if you are afraid of something, isn't it often sage advice to face your fears and try to overcome them? If you were afraid that adults' access to legal laboratory-tested cannabis would send a wrong message to kids and normalize something bad, did you then remind yourself of not only the normalization, but the glamorization of alcohol that kids see every day? Today, tomorrow, every day, Barnstable residents, Barnstable kids are harmed by alcohol, whether by alcoholism, overconsumption, an alcohol-related accident, or a violent crime, or domestic abuse. In fact, 2/3 of victims of spousal abuse report that their partner was under the influence of alcohol at the time of the abuse. Kids see that stuff, too. And that just doesn't happen when spouses share cannabis. I certainly haven't heard of it nor experienced it. Why are you afraid of the normalization of a plant that has been shown to keep people in a calm, homeostatic state? It just doesn't make sense. You've had two years to take the initiative to understand why the majority of Massachusetts voters and the majority of several precincts here in Barnstable voted yes on four. For those of you who relied on the now scientifically-negated just-say-no rhetoric of the past, you've been fooled. And now the future Barnstable, one that could be full of jobs and retail activity that your residents and tourists want to experience, hangs in your hands. It also doesn't make sense that you would consider voting for something that would stifle small businesses and prevent jobs from coming to Barnstable to help families have better lives. What message does that send to kids? It also doesn't make sense that you would allow for more favorable zoning for strip clubs, which exploit women and foster abuse against them. Kids see that. What message does that send to kids? Cannabis is so widely misunderstood, and I get it, guys. I only started learning about this stuff about three years ago. I read an article, and I was like, oh my God, this is, this is a horrible history of abuse and the impacts that prohibition has had on society and families. It's terrible. Marijuana is not the menace to society that you should by now, August 2018, in the age of access to immediate information, know that it isn't. Please don't prevent people like me from having jobs or having safe access to a safer alternative to alcohol and cigarettes by keeping your decision based on bad information. Alcohol sales are going down because of the normalization and widespread acceptance of cannabis. That's something Barnstable should celebrate by welcoming these businesses into town. And just in closing, Counselor Flores, you mentioned tonight that Barnstable holds a special place in our country's history as a birthplace of liberty. I think the majority of Massachusetts voters had liberty on their minds when they voted yes on question four two years ago. They agreed that adults should have safe access to a safer alternative to alcohol. So now that, so now not only are Massachusetts adults at liberty to grow and consume cannabis, they're also at liberty to create businesses, to develop innovative products and technology, to create jobs, to pay taxes, to contribute to what is going to be a multi-billion-dollar industry. Barnstable should want a piece of that. So why would anyone want to limit our safe, convenient access to laboratory-tested legal cannabis? Well, I'm going to say that they probably fear what they don't understand. And instead of banning marijuana businesses from Barnstable and thereby feeding these fears, I encourage you to welcome all marijuana businesses, business licenses to Barnstable now, and take on the responsibility of educating yourselves and your constituents about the science and reality around cannabis. This isn't something to be afraid of. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening, my name is Maureen Grandmont. I live in the town of Hyannis. I'm here to remind this council that the people of the town of Barnstable voted against the original November 8, 2016 marijuana law. Clearly, I'm in the minority here of speakers tonight. Since 2017, the towns of Mashpee, Sandwich, Yarmouth, Dennis, Harwich, and Chatham have all had votes either by town meeting or special election to reinforce their belief that the marijuana ban should be in place. As far as I can believe, I believe that the town of Barnstable is the last to decide on this issue in, in the Cape Cod region. I urge you, this council, to uphold the November 2016 no vote of the people of Barnstable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Patty Anastasia, and I started my cannabis journey about two and a half years ago. I'm a chronic pain patient. I have my medical marijuana. So none of this, what they want to do, their craft or anything, or sell it, manufacture it, is really going to affect me. But I wanted, when I was on opioids, and I had to go to the doctor every five weeks to get another prescription, to go get that prescription filled, and it was getting hotter and hotter for me to get my opioids so I could contribute to life, or to have a life. So I decided to look at the cannabis. I am off of opioids, and I've been on opioids since 1979. I am now off of my sleep medication because of the opioids. I do not smoke it. I take a tincture. I put it under my tongue. I have a tincture that, a CBD, that I put under my tongue to allow me to get out of bed. If I'm having a rough day, I have a tincture that is CBD and THC, which is the psychedelic aspect of it, that helps to take my pain level down. I have another tincture that I put under my tongue that I use to sleep with at night. I just want you, as a town council, to see somebody else that does do cannabis. We don't smoke it. I belong to a fibromyalgia support group on southeast Mass, and 90% of us use cannabis to have a life. So I think to look at not just the steak and bake, which is what a counselor had said here a couple of meetings ago, that there are people that are not the '70s aspect of what you think of, people smoking. So I just wanted you to see a normal person that does cannabis.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hello, Adam Higgins, Precinct 10. Actually, live over in the Berries. I wanted to bring in a little fundraising example of, you know, I'm an advocate for our community, not just cannabis. Actually, done a pretty good job, raised 5,200 of the needed $10,000 to rebuild the park in the Berries, which is falling a little bit on hard times for various reasons. Thank you to Counselor Schnepp and Chief of Police for donating at the Cotuit Arts Center a couple of weeks ago. And in more thanks, Counselors Tinsley, Schnepp, Dagwan, Cullum, Beedenbender, thank you for looking past the fear, uncertainty, and doubt that surrounds this industry, and seeing the true opportunity this new and diverse industry would provide our local entrepreneurs and small businesses. Though it may be painful, you can all rest assured that you'll be on the right side of history if you continue to support this industry, which will become apparent as the racism and stigma around cannabis falls away and the positive economic and social impacts are undeniably proven. Also, I would like to thank Vice President Crocker for caring enough about this issue to hop on WXTK and discuss the idea of adding zoning amendments for cultivation. However, adding cultivation as it is written in tonight's agenda is not enough to allow the industry to move forward here, as the zoning is ridiculously restrictive. While it's hard to not, while it's hard not to laugh at the idea of adult-use cannabis being banned from the adult-use overlay district, which is intended for strip clubs, it's outright impossible not to be insulted by making those two zones the same size. Apparently, the authors of this amendment want to foster this soon-to-be $1.8 billion Massachusetts industry as much as they want to foster strip clubs in Barnstable. Instead of thoughtfully zoning the industry in, it is being blatantly zoned out. You even are proposing a ban to cannabis business from the medical marijuana overlay district, which adds further insult to permanent injury on this industry. Size and placement of the zones aside, there are also critical business types that are being overlooked in this hastily drafted amendment. Specifically, there are two categories to give small businesses, entrepreneurs, and economic empowerment applicants a leg up on big business. Microbusiness is a category specifically for small business. Craft cooperatives is specifically for small farms. Both have caps that are attractive to those who don't have big budgets for big operations. Conversely, those caps are very unattractive to big businesses that only want big operations. As Barnstable appears to want to take it slow, letting small businesses in while keeping big business out might be a good idea for a phased approach. That's exactly what Chutesberry did on May 5, creating thoughtful, small-business exemptions to a moratorium. After extensive research and experience with local zoning, I'd suggest the same. Please consider a moratorium on retail only as it's causing the most fear. People throw logic out the window when fear takes a hold of them, and we need this to be a logic-based, business-oriented decision. Here's two things to consider when making that decision. A ban is not a moratorium. It's a permanent action that will hobble the industry in Barnstable. Don't ban any part of this $1.8 billion Massachusetts industry, or the capital investment won't come here. It'll be seen as too risky. Use the tools at your disposal to wait and see. Form an ad hoc committee to monitor the other categories of business and retail in other towns. If you don't like what you see, you can still ban before the moratorium expires June 30, 2019. Number two, any article that doesn't include adequate zoning amendments for microbusiness and craft cooperatives does not support small business in Barnstable. The CCC has given small business a big opportunity with those license types, and Barnstable entrepreneurs and business owners should be allowed, nay encouraged, to bring those opportunities to the business hub of Cape Cod. Those licenses are not only non-consumer-facing, but they also have caps on cultivation and production that ensure they are small footprint and low risk. Lastly, regarding craft cooperatives, it's not enough to simply say the words. They are, they are mentioned on page 29 of tonight's agenda and included in the cultivation zone. Unfortunately, as the Crockers pointed out, there are no farms in these zones, so there's no opportunity to create one, as at least one member must have an active farm, one with an income that necessitates filing a Schedule F with the IRS. If this amendment is passed as is, it will essentially ban craft cooperatives and microbusinesses, which are the small business categories. That's bad for business, bad for Barnstable, bad for the business hub of the Cape. Remember, history is being made as we speak. Don't be on the wrong side of it, or it won't remember you kindly. The next Cape Cod ships is literally in our midst. All we have to do is not ban them from getting started. We can bring manufacturing and farming jobs back to the Cape. Two industries resurging in a dying economy is exactly what we need. It's exactly the shot in the arm this community needs now more than ever with a declining population, declining and aging population. Thank you again for taking the time and consideration to make the right decision. I hope for all our sakes you decide to be on the right side of history. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? All right, seeing none, I'm going to ask the Town Attorney to come up just to clarify a couple of issues. One, I'd like you to speak to the difference between a moratorium and a ban, and explain how a ban is not a permanent thing, and how, what the process is for reviewing that, similar to the nighttime curfew that we've talked about. And talk about cultivation and manufacturing as it's written in the item, if you would, please.
Thank you again for this opportunity. Again, Ruth Wild, Town Attorney. I'll start with the issue of a moratorium. Currently, the Town Council voted for a moratorium until December 31, 2018. And if no action is taken by that point, we will lose the control to thoughtfully plan for this new use. If the item is passed tonight, 2019-0015, it doesn't preclude that item to be revisited through the normal zoning process, which is, the item is filed with the Town Council, referred to the Planning Board for a hearing, coming back to the council after the Planning Board provides its recommendation. We have talked in this chamber many times about how this is a very nimble form of government, and that's why the town adopted it in 1989. We are not in the town meeting framework where you have to wait six months before anything happens. I think we have an opportunity, and if you wanted to put it in actually an amendment form to revisit this, to review its effectiveness, and to explore whether other amendments could be put in place. So it is not, a ban doesn't mean forever. A ban means until the council wants to bring it up again. And I think that's a distinction that has to be made, particularly since we're the only Cape, the only Cape town that has this opportunity. So that's one thing. In terms of the craft cultivation issue, craft cultivation allows manufacturing as one of its, one of its uses, but this proposed ordinance amendment does not allow manufacturing, easy for you to say, separate and apart from the craft cultivation, but it is available under the craft cultivation, which is allowed under the proposed ordinance. If that's not responsive, I'm willing to answer further.
Do you want to follow up on the clarification?
May I please, thank you very much, Ruth. So I just want to be clear about it. So within the cultivation part of our ordinance, there is a manufacturing, manufacturing and cultivation can go together, but there is no single standing manufacturing thing within the ordinance.
That is correct.
Okay. And the other thing is, is the ban versus moratorium. Any counselor on this dais can sponsor an item to have it reviewed at any time. We don't have a six-month waiting period like other forms of government do. We're very nimble, as you said. I just want to say it, reiterate it, and say it again, that, you know, our, our move tonight, whatever it may be, is a move that is maybe cautious, maybe too cautious for some, but is also one that can be changed. And that's the good part about being a legislative body in this form of government. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just, again, for an example, for those who aren't aware, but we have the ban in place on nighttime businesses, and this body has revisited that at least a few times since it was passed. It's still in place, but we have discussed it and put it on our agenda. All right, thank you for those clarifications. With that, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Well, Planning Board, do you have any clarifications you'd like from Ruth before we?
I think we're all set.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? And that is unanimous. Madam Chair, would you like to close your public hearing?
Yes. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous.
All right, thank you. If you'd like to move over to the Selectments Conference Room, that will be public. The public can go in there. The door will remain open for your deliberation on this item, and we'll continue on with our agenda. All right, thank you. Vice President Crocker, could we go back under Old Business, and could you please read item 2018-074, open the public hearing, and continue it to September 6, please?
Yes, Mr. President, under Old Business, public, open the public hearing, or reopen the public hearing, that requires a two-thirds vote, and move it to September 6, as written.
I have a second. All those in favor of opening, continuing the public hearing on item 2018-074 to September 6, 2018. And that is unanimous, and Counselor Cullum has left the dais. We're going to skip 159 and see how 015 comes back from the Planning Board. So we're going to go into the next item. Counselor Tinsley, could you please read item 2019-001 and open the public hearing, please? Leave it on page 7.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, open the public hearing, roll call vote, two-thirds, item number 2019-001, authorizing the town manager to execute a regulatory agreement between the town of Barnstable and Seashore Homes, Inc., located at 185 Ridgewood Avenue, Hyannis, Massachusetts, as written.
Thank you for that. And go ahead, you can introduce yourself and give the presentation.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Board. Deanne Ojala with Downkeep Engineering, I'm a land surveyor and civil engineer with Downkeep Engineering in Yarmouth Port, and helping the applicants out with what should be a pretty straightforward matter, we think. We've been through the Planning Board process, site plan review, and Planning Board for a small, mostly-market housing development on the east end of the DRI area in, in Hyannis. This is on the very north side of the single-family district. It's up near the Hyannis Gateway District, so it's just across from the hotel at the end of Ridgewood Ave. So we're bordering the next district up, so we think it's a nice transitional between the single-family and obviously the multi-use hotel across the street and the businesses to the north. So it's a little bit more density than is in the single-family, but, you know, not as, as, as developed as to our north in a commercial manner. Basically, what we're asking to do is take a small wooded area that was a former site of an old home. It's rundown, the ground is rough, and it's a little bit haphazard in there. Clean it up, put a nice little two, four-unit housing buildings in there with some parking to the right, landscaping in the front. It'll be connected to town sewer, water. Again, nice landscaping improvements, trash, and we feel it'll be a nice little project. There's one of the units, or 12 and 1/2 percent, it works out to be, is going to be affordable to, I believe it's 80% of the AMI, but we worked with staff to get that conditioned properly in there. And so it's not a 40B where you'd have two, but at least there is one, so it's going to help the, the housing count. And what we really feel that'll be nice is for positivism, relatively affordable new housing in, right in town. I know some of the counselors have been very supportive of it, and we certainly appreciate that. The Planning Board did approve it. Again, it's two structures, it's 64, 48 score. Again, it's two structures, it's 64, 48 square feet gross total, so again, it's not a huge project. They're all two-bedroom units. We don't think people will be in here long-term. Mr. Mason and his wife Deborah are here from the Seashore Homes, Inc. They're the principals, and if you have any questions of them, they would certainly be glad to answer them. Attorney Bedrow is here as well if there's questions of a legal nature, but we thought we'd just keep it simple here. Again, the staff does a great job. They went through some of the benefits to the town, that we'll get that market rate housing. It's identified in the housing needs study. We've got sufficient onsite parking, exterior site lighting improvements. We've got stormwater to infiltrate 100 percent onsite, and we're adhering to smart growth standards and goals by providing attractive new housing in an area with close accessibility to the public transit facilities, shopping, and other amenities, which will contribute to the revitalization of downtown Hyannis and the Hyannis area. Again, it's a little bit blighted, it'll be a lot nicer little area once we're done. We did work on some waivers. I'll just buzz through those very quickly. Mostly are just related to the development on the site being, you know, more than would be allowed in a single-family. There's some parking landscape buffers. We're providing wheel stops and a little bit of space in front, but normally you do allow a sidewalk in those zones. Here, we're a little bit less. Dumpster set back, we're pulling the dumpster about four feet away instead of 10, but you can see we've got it up against the commercial zone where there's existing pavement and shouldn't be a bother to anybody. The uses, this is an important one, a single-family or all that's permitted in this particular district, other than, well, you can read in there, there's several, if you have professional offices and multifamily in some of the lots in the district, but we are providing for multifamily, so that's the eight units on the .4 acre lot. So the lot size relief for the abutting lot coverage. What that relates to is basically you've got a highly developed piece of property to the north. It's been there for many, many years. This, again, had a single-family house. It's been assessed for a single-family house, paid taxes for a single-family house lot in the SF District for many years, but there is a legal precedent that it may have merged with that property. So basically, what we're asking to do is just sever that legally from the properties to the north and develop this, basically in, you know, accordance with the zoning. We're going to have the 30 percent green and 50 percent impervious after we re-green and redevelop around the houses. But the remainder of the site to the north is highly developed, there's very little green area. So we'd just like you to bless us and allow the status quo to remain to the north, and we'll redevelop this little area in general conformance with the current regulations. So that's the 24091. The 10-foot perimeter green space, you can say we meet it on the south and generally meet it on the west and the east, but the north is a little light. Again, it's against a commercial parking lot. The planning board thought that would be okay. 20-foot landscape to residential, as you show on the site plan, we've got some screening. We are residential, so it's not a huge concern, and we've got some patios in that space in the back. Wall head protection, natural state 30 percent. We will end up with 30 percent green, but in the interim, we're going to have to disturb some of the natural area, so there's that waiver as well. So that's it, you know, again, the density and the size, and most of it relates to it being in the WP District and some modest perimeter relief. We've worked with the boards, Hyannis Fire Department reviewed everything, they'll be fully sprinkled. We've got the fire truck turning radius. It's a very light traffic generator. I know you generally are, you know, less than one trip per peak hour, probably about half, so you've got, you know, eight or so trips in an hour. It's not going to be a big load, but it will provide some much-needed housing. And as part of the package, we're, to sweeten the deal, we're providing some off-site sewer improvements. I wouldn't bore you with the details of that, but there's another slide, if any of you are interested, we could go over the improvements that we're making off-site. Be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Thanks, Dan. I'd like to ask Elizabeth Jenkins, just to come up, Director of Planning, just to give us a brief overview of the process that we got here.
Good evening, councilors. Nice to be here. Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development, for the record. As the applicant stated, this is a request for a regulatory agreement under Chapter 168 of the town ordinances. It is allowed in the downtown Hyannis growth incentive zone among elsewhere. This particular process was begun on an administrative review level. We worked with the applicant through a series of meetings, including the site plan review process, to refine the project, to come into compliance to the extent it could, given the site constraints. As we say, we have, there were some initial infrastructure issues that we worked through, and the applicant was able to address this as part of this process. So, again, this process did proceed through the site plan review process, gained approval from that board. It proceeded to planning board, it was considered at two public hearings at the planning board. There were a few changes that were made as a result of that process. I believe there were some minor tweaks made to the plan to bring the project into conformance with parking requirements. In addition, during that process, the applicant did agree to de-restrict one of the units as affordable. So ultimately, this project did receive a unanimous vote of support from the planning board. I'll just note the waivers they are looking for under the regulatory agreement process, as Mr. Ojala stated, do relate to density of the, the number of units on the site. This is an SF, single-family district with densities not at this permissible level, some setback and dimensional relief, as well as relief to the lot area requirements. This lot would not currently be a buildable lot under the current zoning landscape. So those are the major forms of relief that they would be seeking in the regulatory agreement.
Thank you for that, and I just want to recognize Counsel Hebert for sponsoring the article. So this is a public hearing. Some members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? And that is unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item. Counsel Flores.
Just a couple of quick questions. I'm just curious, relative to abutters in the area, the fact that this is as dense as it is, have they been contacted? Have we reached out to them, and has there been any feedback?
So if I may, this is a, this hearing, as well as the prior planning board hearing, were notice public hearings in front of the planning board. There were a number of abutters who did appear at the initial public hearing with some concerns. Again, this, I believe the planning board public hearing was held open for two meetings. They did appear at that first hearing, but I do not believe came back and followed up at the second hearing, so. So there was some, there was some awareness of abutters about this project.
So their concerns were addressed and they agreed, or is there?
I would characterize generally as yes. We're trying to be sensitive. We're not putting any windows to the westerly abutter especially, and there's going to be some fencing there and some screening, so I think that at the end of the day, they were generally satisfied.
And the only other question I have is the parking with eight units and only 13 parking spaces? What happens if, I mean, they're two-bedroom units, so I assume there's two people in each one. If there's two cars, that's 16 cars. Where do the other five go if there's only 13? There's no street parking there.
Yeah, there's, none specifically, but I guess the short answer is that they will have to make do. We do meet the ordinance. We generally find that one and a half, or, you know, this ratio is pretty close to enough. If it does become a problem at full occupancy, we could probably work with Mr. Bornstein. Hubbard Oil owns a vacant lot across the street. We could probably work something out, but we don't anticipate it to be a problem.
Thank you.
Any other councilors? Counsel Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to thank you, Elizabeth. I know you worked very hard with your team to work with the developer, and we resolved a lot of little issues and moved forward, and I thank you. Never fast enough for me, but we moved forward, so thank you very much. This really is keeping with our plan for housing and growth within Hyannis, and we're very, very blessed to have such very dedicated and experienced developers to do this. This is almost a project of love that you're doing, and it really, I want to thank you for it, and it's going to add to that neighborhood. That neighborhood has been, that end where you're doing it has some very nice houses. My hope is that in the near future, some good, more development can take place where that vacant lot is, that's kind of an eyesore, but this is a very nice addition in moving that neighborhood in the right direction, so I want to thank you very much for your dedication.
Any other councilors? Do I have a motion to move the question?
Second.
All those in favor of moving the question? And that is unanimous. And this is item 2019-001, it's a two-thirds roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Dean Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Kresetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your consideration. We appreciate it very much.
Have a good night. Counselor Schnep, could you please read item 2019-004 and open the public hearing? I believe it's on page 22.
Item 2019-004, old business, public hearing, appropriation order in the amount of $11,438.30 for the purpose of addressing the impact of transportation network services on Town of Barnstable transportation infrastructure.
I have a second. We have our Director of Finance, Mark Millen. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, councilors. Good to see you all this evening. This is a new recurring revenue source for the Town of Barnstable that was created out of the Chapter 187 of the Acts of 2016. The Department of Public Utilities charges all transportation network companies a 20 cent per ride assessment, which goes into a statewide fund, and they share half of that revenue with each town that the ride originates in. So Barnstable had just over 114,000 rides from these transportation network companies last year. So they're distributing 11,000, just over $11,000 to the Town of Barnstable, and the money is restricted, must be appropriated for, specifically for, to address transportation network services on our roads, bridges, infrastructure, and other public purposes that are substantially related to the impact of these operations. So it could go for operating budgets as well. So we ask for your support tonight to allow us to spend this money in accordance with the law that we, and how we have to do it.
Thank you, Mark. And this is a public hearing. Some members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? And that is unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item?
Question?
I have a second. All those in favor of moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is item 2019-004. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Crocker?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Kresetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Dean Bender?
Yes.
Unanimous, thank you very much. Counselor Dagwan, could you please read item 2019-005 and open the public hearing? I believe it's on page 24.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is item 2019-005, appropriation order in the amount of $80,000, Community Preservation Funds for Passive Recreation Shared Use Pedestrian and Bicycle Path Phase Four. This should be open for a public hearing.
Second. I have a second. We have the Chair of the CPC Committee here, Lindsey Council. Nice to see you.
Thank you, President Stein Hilber, members of the council. The Department of Public Works is seeking approval from the town council through the town manager for CPA open space recreation funds in the amount of $80,000 for alternative route study for Phase Four of the Cape Cod Rail Trail, CCRT. DPW project management is estimated to total about $100,000 in in-kind services over the 10-year project life. The Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously for a recommendation at the June 25th, 2018 meeting. Phase Four of the CCRT is proposed to extend from the termination of Phase Three at the intersection of Mary Dunn Road and Independence Drive to the Barnstable-Sandwich Town Line. In order to submit this project for inclusion on the State Transportation Improvement Program, that's the TIP program, and to fund the construction, the town is required to complete a study of route alternatives and present the study to Mass DOT with a preferred alignment recommended by the town. And here tonight is Dan Santos to give us an overview on that.
Thank you, Lindsey. Welcome, Dan.
Dan Santos, Director of Public Works, Mr. President, members of the town council. I just have a brief presentation over some of the things that Lindsey mentioned. So this is, actually, we've been working on rail trail projects for many years here, and we've had great success on Cape, Capewide, in addition to Barnstable. So basically, as Lindsey mentioned, we're seeking community preservation funds to do an engineering study to look at alternatives for alignments and siting of the rail trail through Barnstable from Mary Dunn Road to the Sandwich Town Line. And this is considered Phase Four of a multi-phase project that's being funded by State Department of Transportation. And the ultimate cost of this phase is about $20 million, so this is a, you know, a pretty small percentage, very small percentage of that ultimately, with the state paying the bill for these, and has committed to that now and into the future. And then it meets all the qualifications for the low comprehensive plan and satisfies all the criteria for the CPC and CPA, under the CPA, for utilizing these funds, as was evidenced by their unanimous vote to support this. So I thought it might be important to show the different phases here. The phase that, there are four phases, and Phase One is in the pink there, and that's from Route 134 in Dennis, and it goes over to near where Bass River is. And then Phase Two is the Bass River Bridge section. They replaced the old railroad bridge, and that reconnects with what was Phase One that goes to Peter Homer Park in Yarmouth. And then Phase Three takes it from there into Barnstable along what will be an easement along Fish and Wildlife property, which, as you may recall, is a pretty significant doing. And we're finally wrapping that up now that, working with the OT and the Department of Conservation and Recreation, we have that alignment and the width of that path pretty much nailed down so that we can finalize that easement. And then that ends up at Mary Dunn Road. And then Phase Four will take it from there through Independence Park, cross Route 132, and then somewhere along the service road. So ultimately, as mentioned here, I don't need to repeat it, but the goal of the engineering study will look at alternative routes and then work with the community to obtain a preferred route, and once that's done and completed, then we can submit the proper forms to the Department of Transportation so that we can get on the TIP, or the Transportation Improvement Project, list in the future. And this whole process, by the time we get to construction here, is probably going to be 10 years. These are lengthy projects. The TIP is a five-year program. You know, we're not, you know, this is a year project, then the TIP, and so it's a number of years. Obviously, many benefits from the project, you can see them here, but it's primarily providing bike path for off-road primarily. It's possible, I mean, they will look at some potential on-road as you get through Independence Park, but primarily an off-road bike path consistent with what's been built throughout the Cape to provide recreational opportunities for runners, bikers, families, and a variety of recreational opportunities, which has been very successful across the Cape, and obviously supportive of all socioeconomic conditions, backgrounds, circumstances. It's really for everyone. And then finally, just a timeline. This is about a year study, and you can see the things that we'll be working on. It's pretty extensive to look in depth at all these potential routes and include... It's pretty extensive to look in depth at all these potential routes and include utilities and drainage, environmental permitting. We want to look at how this will connect to the other bike trails that are in Barnstable and bike paths, both on and off-road, as a network that we've been working on for many years. So, and how does this connect into the features of Barnstable that we want people to be able to visit and enjoy? So that's just a brief summary of some of the benefits and why we sought the approval through the CPC and look forward to your support for this appropriation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And this is a public hearing, so any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? And that is unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item? Counselor Schnep?
Thank you, thank you, Dan. Could you give us a projection of when Phase Three might be under construction?
Right now, it's scheduled for 2022. So it is, it is on the tip and, you know, that doesn't move around too much, so it will probably be then. The state has committed those funds for that timeframe.
Any other counselors? Counselor Bean Bender?
I'm so excited this is happening. I was taking my 25-mile bike ride this morning at 6:30 and was wishing I had a rail trail to ride on because even at that time, the traffic is quite hairy. Unfortunately, I don't know that I'm going to live to see this happening, but I'm happy that my daughter's generation will. But just thanks for seeing this forward and it's very exciting. Barnstable is, as we know, is sort of like, it's happening on the east side and the west side and we're just waiting to make it go forth. But I was wondering, would you mind just sending, I don't know if anyone else wants it, but I would love a map of the CCRT with the phases and timelines because I have a number of constituents who have been asking me about it, so I'd like to be able to share that.
Sure, let me figure out what the best one is to show that.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
And I'll get that to you all.
Thanks.
Any other counselors? I have a second, all those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is item 2019-005, roll call vote.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Kersetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Bean Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
That's unanimous, thank you. I see that our planning board has returned. I'd like to ask the Town Attorney just to come up briefly and just give us the quick protocol here for delivering the report, the vote, or the vote from the planning board.
Good evening again. So after the public hearing of the planning board was closed, they have 21 days to deliver a recommendation. They were good enough to deliberate and take their vote tonight, so once the Chair gives her recommendation, which she's poised to do, then the Town Council can act. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Well, we never closed our deliberation, we only closed the public hearing portion. Madam Chair, would you please let us know the determination of your body?
Sure, thank you, President Schneider. After the close of the public hearing, a motion was duly made and seconded to recommend the adoption of the zoning amendment 2019-015, amending Chapter 240, the zoning ordinance, to add regulations for establishing and operating registered recreational marijuana cultivation, research facilities, and independent testing labs, and prohibiting all other non-medical marijuana establishment. The vote was for in favor, one in opposition, and one in abstention. The motion carried.
Thank you very much for that, Madam Chair, and for all the planning members' work tonight. So that'll come over now to the council. So did you want to close your meeting?
Yes, that would be great. Second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Town Attorney, hold on a second.
I believe that there is a written recommendation that the Chair of the Planning Board would like to submit as well.
Should you give that to the Town Clerk? Okay.
Are you going to do that for me?
So you're formally adjourned? Okay, let's take a two-minute recess if the planning board wishes to take off for the night, so I want to give you that courtesy. You can stick around, but we'll take a two-minute recess. I'd like to ask the Chair of the Zoning Committee, which reviewed this tonight as well, to give us the committee's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met at 6 o'clock, discussed it at length. We were fortunate to have staff with us and explain several questions that came up. And when the vote was taken, there were five in favor, no opposed, and one abstention. We had a late joiner to the event. So it was 5, 0, 1 in favor.
Thank you very much. All right, so let's get into counsel deliberation on this item. Any counsel discussion? Counselor Cullum?
Yes, so I wanted to touch base on, unfortunately, Dan Linsky couldn't be here with us tonight, but I think I was the impetus to have him come initially because I sat in a meeting with him and I think his gravitas as former Boston Police Chief was really sobering for me, pardon the pun, because he could talk a lot about security, because he's now, obviously he does security with Kroll, but he spoke a lot to the actual data that happens in the areas where these facilities are. And it, because I'm in a position where I hear a lot of fear and I hear a lot of concern and I hear a lot of hope and I hear all these things, I just felt like it would be a lot better to have statistics, letters from police chiefs, even emails from police chiefs that we got today, that said, "It's not what I expected, these are the statistics," and as opposed to just articles, because if you Google anything, you can find too many pros and too many cons, and it all just kind of seemed so subjective. But speaking with him seemed very non-subjective, so I'm sorry that he couldn't make it today. I'm thankful that Mike came in his stead, but it was unfortunately not the same presentation than I thought it would be, but thanks for your indulgence with regard to that. Let's see, I wanted to talk a little bit about Asia, the woman who came up with the lateral plant-growing concept, and it reminded me of something that, I mean, this is exactly the type of business that we want here in Barnstable, obviously, people are innovating, young, you know, this is what we want. But it kind of dovetails nicely, even though some may not think that way, with the area that is zoned for this because of something that Counselor Crocker brought up several times, which is the cost of property value in the area where these zones are. I mean, the properties are less expensive by nature there, and if we're doing, if we're growing plants laterally, maybe we can stack plants, maybe we can really get something going. I realize it's a small zone, but I think we are restricting ourselves with our imagination more than we need to. Because of the way we have our government, because we can change things in two reeds, because of this flexibility that we have, I feel that this is a good way to get our foot in the door and get people comfortable with the concept, a concept that is like the tide. I agree, it's coming. But I think it's a nice, a nice way to start, and so I want to thank everyone for their hard work on it. It rolled out really rocky, of course, but I think we're finally coming to center, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Counselor Bean Bender?
Thank you. One of my primary concerns surrounding this ordinance is that it's friendly to business and that we would welcome in particular small businesses in this community and help support entrepreneurs and locals, not big business, but people in our town, the people that we heard from in this audience tonight. That said, there's also the balance that we have as counselors, it's a weighing. And one of the things that we do have to keep in mind is that the majority of the population did vote against this, and it is something we do have to recognize. So while I personally would really like to see any kind of business related to this industry treated the same way we treat any commercial enterprise in this town, so essentially, any place there's commercial zoning, that's where I think manufacturing, cultivation should take place. I would also be very supportive of us supporting our existing farmers, on existing farmland, in becoming cultivators. That said, I think that's a little bit down the road, hopefully not too far down the road, but I think we have some cultural concerns and education and some transitions that have to take place before we can fully accept a full-boat move in that direction. So while I am not completely satisfied with this ordinance as it is, I think it is a move in the direction. It allows, it allows for some important medical uses, but that really wasn't the piece that was on the table here. It was really about adult use and adult, adult-use businesses. And this ordinance does take into account cultivation, craft cooperatives, it does not include retail, which, you know, we all know that there's, doesn't seem to be a lot of stomach for that in the town at this point. So what I would, what I would suggest is that I would like to include a friendly amendment in this, is that, you know, we extend the moratorium on retail to June 2019, that we also revisit this issue in six months, and in that, in that time period, we also put together a working group to study, to study what takes place in, under this new ordinance and to see if it actually takes a hold at all and it has any good economic benefit to the town. And also to have a chance to work with folks in the industry to talk about how we could move the town forward down the road. So that would be my suggestion in this and my thoughts.
So are you, are you making an amendment? What exactly is the amendment? Because that was kind of long-winded.
Okay, sorry. So my friendly, my friendly amendment is this, that we revisit this in six months in that, and in that time period, what that allows us to do is to set up a working group to study the impact and the effectiveness of this ordinance, should it go forward, and that we also extend the moratorium on retail to June 2019. That would be my friendly amendment.
Well, you're asking to revisit this in six months, so a moratorium that seems duplicative. So, so you're basically making, you're making a motion to add a section two that this would be revisited within six months?
Mm-hmm.
That's the amendment?
Mm-hmm.
I believe that falls within the four corners of the article. Is there a second for that? I have a second. Any counsel discussion on the proposed amendment? Counselor Cullum?
I believe that six months is too short of a period of time to get any traction or gather any data that we're going to need, so I would, I would support it a year, maybe, but I think six months is just, it goes like that, you know? I just think it's too brief of a stretch of time. I'm all about reviewing it and making sure it's working for the town of Barnstable and the people in the town of Barnstable, but I believe that six months is too short of a window.
We actually started this process six months ago, in March, so that's, that's six months. Any other counselors? Counselor Rap Kersetti?
With regard to the amendment, are you thinking of a working group of counselors or of representatives from the community, from the industry, or?
I think the amendment's just to revisit this in six months, that was it.
So just? No, I also wanted a working group as part of that, yes. It includes a working group because I, and that would include some council representation, but staff from the town, people from the industry, you know, so we have business people who can actually speak to whether or not this zoning works, what they're looking for, you know, we're talking about cultivation going vertically. I mean, an hour ago, I didn't even know that that was possible to go horizontal, but we're, we're weighing in on an industry that we have no experience in, and we're saying, "We're going to set up zoning for you, assuming that it's going to work." And I think that having a working group that includes people from that industry would be highly beneficial to this council.
If I may, Mr. President, I would concur with Counselor Cullum that six months is just not enough time, and I would not support the amendment at six months, but.
So let's do, let's extend it to six, 2019?
Hold on. Do you want to withdraw your amendment?
Okay, yes, I'll withdraw that amendment and make a new one.
All right, what's the new amendment?
That we extend. That we extend, that basically we extend this to June 2019, and we put in a working group to study this issue.
That's still six months. The moratorium goes till December.
Six/2019, June 2019.
Right. Our moratorium runs through December this year, so you're talking six months next year, starting in January.
Right. Extend it to June.
Okay. Is there a second? A second?
Right, and that includes the study group, right?
Study group would fall under, that would be like a presidential committee that we'd put together. That wouldn't be something we'd put in the article.
Okay.
I have a question.
So the, well, hold on a second. So we have another amendment, the first one withdrawn, another amendment to extend, to revisit this by the end of June 2019. And I have a second from Counselor Dagewan. Is there discussion on this amendment? Counselor Schnep?
I have a question on whether, if we were to pass this ordinance tonight, does that go into effect immediately, or is the temporary moratorium that is in place till December 31st still hold?
Yeah, well, that's the town attorney to clarify that.
Apologies. It would be effective 30 days from passage under the charter. I also suggest, under your rules, motions should be in writing, so once we clarify the various issues, it would be helpful to the clerk if we memorialize this, particularly since we're amending a zoning ordinance, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Counselor Cullum?
I guess I just have some concerns about the verbiage and the dates, so I guess I would prefer to continue the ban for one year from tonight, if we choose to vote, and then revisit, and then, I mean, what's the difference, really? I mean, if it's the, if we're going to June 30th, why not do, I don't know, makes no sense. I just think it's eight months instead of, you know?
Counselor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. Because we have agreed that we just need two readings to change, I feel like we're boxing ourselves in with this time. I think that we're making a big stride here to be respectful of what we're trying to accomplish, which is to be cautious but remain very open. So my concern is, again, that if we put a six-month or one-year, when in reality, suppose in three months, something dynamic changes, then we should be ready to move forward on that, you know, just pie in the sky, but if everything goes very well and we see some real positive movement going here, and then all of a sudden a huge group comes in and says, "Why, we could really revolutionize this," and the data is coming through both the state and our other local towns, that this is a very good thing for us, then we should be able to, within two readings, change. So I feel like this is a restriction to set a new date. Just my thought. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Flores?
I think when we look at this long-term, you know, as a council, we have the capacity to bring anything we want as a friendly amendment or as an article, so I don't, I think by putting a timeframe on it, it's an arbitrary kind of recommendation that we don't need. We can do it next week or the week after. It's up to us as counselors.
Counselor Cullum?
I think that what, and I don't want to speak for you, Counselor Beanbender, but I think what Counselor Beanbender might be looking for is a commitment on the part of this council to be vigilant and responsive to this entire industry, and I think that might be, you know, and the sense of it.
Thank you for being more articulate than I was.
Well, you were more articulate earlier, so there you go. But, and I mean, I can promise that I will be vigilant and watch, and I think that we, as elected officials, have that responsibility and respect our constituency enough to do that, so, thank you.
Counselor Beanbender?
Based on the conversation that just took place then, so as not to strangle us at all and give us greater flexibility, so we could revisit it in three if we wanted to, I'm going to withdraw my most recent amendment.
Okay, thank you for that. So we're back to item as written. Any other council discussion on the item? Counselor Tinsley?
Thank you. I wanted to make sure we got through the amendment process. So there's just a couple very particular things I'd like to discuss about this item. Taking medical marijuana out of it, there are eight license types that have to do with marijuana, cannabis. Only one of them has to do with retail purchase. The other seven have nothing to do with selling it to the public, and we are limiting ourselves to three of those on this, so that's my first concern. Secondly, like others, I, and I was very upfront with this earlier on, that I have a problem with the prohibiting all other non-medical. I know we've discussed, it only takes two readings and we can revisit, and we did all this. That's wonderful, but it doesn't happen very often. My amendment would have been that we put a three-year moratorium on this, which would give plenty of time. A moratorium doesn't stop us, again, from revisiting it. Three months from now, six months from now, we could do one of those two readings and still change it. But I think this verbiage is, while we are allowing three businesses to come into Barnstable in that small area, when other businesses outside of our community see that we are prohibiting, they will feel like I do and like many do, that that won't change and it'll be difficult to change. We've talked on this council for 10 years about, you know, getting business to come to us, communicating better. We've done things with licensing and websites and all, but that right there would send the message out there that we don't want you. And we can say all we want, that, you know, we'll look at it again if it changes, we can change that, we won't prohibit it again, but I do have an issue with that, and that we're still prohibiting four other non-retail items from coming. Craft marijuana cooperative, as was mentioned, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana transporter, and micro-business. We're not allowing any of those, and none of those have anything to do with selling it to you or me. So that's just my feelings on that. If this council isn't up to, it seems like the thought process is that we don't mind the prohibiting. I won't belabor the point and try to change it to moratorium and go forward. I just want you to know how I feel about this issue, and I think those changes would make a better piece of legislation. Thank you.
Could I ask the town attorney again to come up? We did this before, but just clarify the cultivation and the manufacturing in the item as written, please, in craft.
Under the definitions in the state law, cultivation includes craft cultivation, and it's explicitly within what's allowed under OO-115, it allows craft cultivation, so that is permitted. And I just want to, if I may just respond, moratorium is supposed to be temporary. I don't think courts would look favorably on a three-year moratorium. I think that would be difficult to sustain.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Any other counselors? Counselor Hebert?
Thank you. Again, I want to emphasize that, I mean, the school board pretty much begged us and made it public that they don't want any retail shops, but when you look at the statistics and if these, if our research and our data collection and what we create a zone where we can get some more information in the laboratories, if we continue to see statistics that report that young people are less apt to use the marijuana and to reduce the opioid crisis, if these statistics continue to come to us, we've been a very thoughtful council that has listened. Granted, the public voted unanimously for us to, a no vote in terms of the town, but it was very, very close, and the state has given us the responsibility of reviewing this for our town, and I think that we have done a very thoughtful, thorough job of doing this. So this particular item says that we're moving forward, we're open, but we clearly are cautious, but we have to protect our children. I'm going to respond to your shaking your head. I have a responsibility, I know, we can't go into debate.
It's not a conversation.
Okay, all right? But I can't be more emphatic that we're here to protect our children and our public, and I think we're doing a very good job, and I applaud everyone's efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors?
Move the question.
You have a second. All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is item 2019-015.
Mr. President? Charter objection.
Okay, so we will take this up on September 6. All right, so we're going to move into the next agenda item, 2019-006. Let's see. Counselor LeBeck, could you please read and open the public hearing on that item?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an old, this is old business, public hearing, roll call, vote. 2019-006, appropriation order in the amount of $200,000, Community Preservation Funds for Community Housing Creation Housing Assistance Corp., HAC, Hack 57 Ridgewood Avenue, Hyannis, as written.
Have a second. Welcome back, Lindsay. Our brief interlude there.
Thank you, Council President Steinheilber, Lindsay Counsel, Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee. The Housing Assistance Corporation, Hack, is seeking approval from the Town Council through the Town Manager for CPA Community Housing Funds in the amount of $200,000 in support of the development of two affordable units, $100,000 each, within a new multifamily development located at 57 Ridgewood Ave., Hyannis. The Community Preservation Committee voted five yes and one no for recommendation at the June 28, 2018 meeting. This $200,000 request represents a portion of the total project budget amount of $1.8 million, and by converting an underutilized vacant lot, Hack proposes to construct three multifamily dwellings with site improvements, which include a shared parking lot with 13 spaces and a shared outdoor space, and creating a pocket neighborhood. The cottage-style residential development called Lofts at 57 is composed of one two-family dwelling and two three-unit townhouses totaling eight units. Hack is voluntarily creating two affordable units, 25% of the development, for residents with household incomes under 80% of area median income within the development that will add to Barnstable's affordable housing inventory and will be secured with an affordable housing restriction in perpetuity. The folks from Hack are here to answer any questions on this project. You did just review this shortly, so we kept this brief, and we look forward to your favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Lindsay. Welcome.
Hi, Dave Quinn from Hack. I also have Sandy Horvitz, also from Housing Assistance Corporation. So again, we're here tonight to talk about Lofts at 57. I'll be brief, because I know this is a project that we've discussed at length, and it's been a long night, but we're here tonight to request $200,000 to help support this project. As you know, it's eight units, six market rate and two affordable. So while we think the market rate component is a very important part of this project, as a nonprofit with a mission to support affordable housing, we think the two affordables are also equally as important. Also, this is really the only public funding we're requesting for this project. The entire rest of the project will be privately financed, so this is the only money we're asking from the town or any other public agency. Just a quick update on where things are at with the project since we were last here. You may have noticed we've started to do some clearing on the site on Ridgewood Ave. We've also been working on updating our designs, making more detailed designs, and the project is currently out to bid for a general contractor. So we're hoping to award a general contractor for this project on September 7, well, that's when they'll be due back, then we can proceed through financing, and we're hoping to have the project ready to go by the end of the year. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have about this request.
Okay, this is a public hearing. So any members of the public who wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none of our motion, close the public hearing. All those in favor closing the public hearing? And that's unanimous. Council discussion on this item?
Move the question.
I have a second. All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous as well. This is item 2019-006. Roll call, vote.
Dagewan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rapkursetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
LeBeck?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Steinheilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beanbender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We have one item under old business before we move on to new business. Vice President Crocker, could you please reopen and continue the public hearing on item 2018-159 to September 6, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Open and continue the meeting till September 6 for 2018-159 as written.
I have a second. All those in favor of reopening and continuing the public hearing on item 2018-159 to September 6, 2018? And that is unanimous. All right, back to new business. Counselor Flores, could you please read item 2019-016, please?
This is new business and may be acted upon. It is item number 2019-016. It is a resolve seeking letter of support for declaration of September 27 as Cape Cod Independence Day as written.
And we did have public comment earlier from Mr. Fisk, and any council discussion on this resolve?
Second.
All right, I have a second. All those in favor moving the question? And that's unanimous. This is item 2019-016. All those in favor of this item? That is unanimous. All right, moving on to item 2019-017. Counselor Wallace, could you please read that item? I believe it's on page 38.
Mr. President, transfer order of $300,000 for the emergency repairs and design of long-term solution for the Hyannis West Elementary School roof trust repairs as written.
I have a second. Thank you. All right, do you have the rationale?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council, Dave Canock, Director of Facilities, Barnstable Schools.
Good to see you.
The rationale, funding is required for the emergency engineering, design and repair of a roof trust failure at the Hyannis West Elementary School. The State's Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance has authorized that the school department can proceed with emergency repairs for up to $200,000. Emergency repairs include the design and repair of two trusses which have failed. The failed trusses will be supplemented with steel truss on each side of the failed structures. Also included in this funding is the comprehensive investigation of the entire trust system throughout the building and $100,000 in funding for the design of a long-term solution for reinforcing the trust system throughout the building. A subsequent appropriation request for construction of the long-term solution will be forthcoming in the near future.
Thank you, Dave. Any council discussion on this item? Counselor Flores?
I'm just curious, with this being an emergency in terms of school starting relatively quickly, what impact it will have on the classroom environment?
Okay, right now, it's the cafeteria that's affected, and we've had that closed off. We've secured that, and it's, we've got temporary shoring in there, so it's, everything is safe and secure and being supported properly, and we're having lunches in the gym. If this is ongoing, we're also looking at doing some kind of portable arrangement for temporary, but school will go on.
What is the timeframe for the trusses to be replaced?
With this appropriation tonight, we'll get out right now and get the plans completed, and we hope to have it done by the middle of October.
Okay, and there's no inherent?
And let me, I just had to, if there are no further major corrections need to be done, we still need to do some more investigation on the trusses. So right now, I
So right now, I can't put a real firm timeframe on it, other than to say that we want to get these emergency repairs in place by October.
And with kids coming into the building within two to three weeks, you're telling me there's no danger, there's no concern, there's nothing for a parent to be concerned about safety-wise?
No, the town building inspector has been on site, and he's satisfied.
Counselor Rap Grissette?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Dave. So D-CAM authorized up to $200,000, but you're asking for $300,000, $100,000 of it is to investigate further?
Right, we want to do some more in engineering design, and also if we have to go out and create bid specs, we want to be able to do that immediately, have the money there appropriated.
So will you be doing the bid specs, or are you going to?
Town architect myself, and we'll be using our on-call engineering CBI. That's what the $100 is for.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Flores?
I'm just curious, how was this discovered? Are the trusses exposed, or are they?
No, we actually noticed.
This is not something usually that you see.
Yeah, we noticed a deflection in the ceiling. And we investigated and found that there had been some failure of the trust members. Immediately closed off the space, got it shored up, and made it safe, and we've been doing investigation now from that point.
Good, I'm glad that.
So are we.
Any other counselors? Counselor Neary?
Yeah, Mr. Caniak, curious, what, is there a rough estimate of what the cost of replacing that entire roof would be, as opposed to just truss?
We, right now, we have budgetary numbers, but they're really only budgetary, and we really need to do a little more investigation. We will be back in the near future with that number.
It seems like it's a substantial number now. I'm just curious what the?
It's, it could be even more substantial, but I'm not sure yet. I don't want, I can't say. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Second, all those in favor of moving the question? And that's unanimous. This is item 2019-017. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you. All right, Counselor Tinsley, could you please read item 2019-018 and refer to a public hearing on September 6, 2018?
Through you, Mr. President. This is 2019, correct? There's just a little Scribner's error on my copy. It says 2018.
Yeah, 2019.
Okay.
-018.
Gotcha. This is the first read, and item number 2019-018, authorizing the Town Manager to execute a regulatory agreement between the town of Barnstable and Big Pink LP as written.
You have a second? All those in favor referring item 2019-018 to a public hearing on September 6, 2018? And that is unanimous. Counselor Rap Grissette, could you please read item 2019-019 and refer to a second read on September 6, please?
Yes, Mr. President. New business. Item 2019-019, resolve authorizing the Town Manager to execute a host community agreement with Vineyard Win LLC for the project currently pending before the Commonwealth Department of Public Utilities and DPU 18-18 and 18-19, and with the Energy Facility Siting Board in EFsb 17-05. Refer to a second reading on 9/6/2018.
You have a second? All those in favor of referring item 2019-019 to a second read on September 6, 2018? And that is unanimous. Counselor Rap Grissette, could you continue on with item 2019-020, please?
Yes, this is on new business and refer to a second reading on 9/6/2018. Item 2019-020, appointments to a board, committee, or commission resolved at the Town Council points to following individuals to a multiple-member board, committee, or commission. Airport Commissioner Norman Wheel, 35 Dewey Lane, Catuit, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2021. Community Preservation Committee Catherine Garofoli, 8 Western Circle, Hyannis, Mass, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2021. Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District Commission Cheryl Powell, 419 Huckinsneck Road, Centerville, Mass., is a historical commission representative to a term expiring 6/30/2020. Infrastructure and Energy Committee Peter Doyle, 16 Linden Lane, Austerville, Mass., is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2021. Licensing Authority David Nunheimer, 221 Sadler Lane, West Barnstable, from an associate member to a full member to a term expiring 6/30/2021. Youth Commission Morgan Contrino as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2019 as read.
You have a second? All those in favor of referring item 2019-020 to a second read on September 6, 2018? And that is unanimous. Could you please continue on with item 2019-021?
Yes, this is also new business. Refer to a second reading on 9/6/2018. Item 2019-021, reappointments to a board, committee, or commission resolved. The Town Council reappoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board, committee, or commission. Community Preservation Committee Deborah Converse, Centerville, as a Barnstable Housing Authority Representative Member to a term expiring 6/30/2021. Recreation Commission Renee Dowling as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2019, and Renee King as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2020 as read.
You have a second? All those in favor referring item 2019-021 to a second read on September 6, 2018? And that is unanimous. And that ends the orders of the day. Our next regular meeting is September 6, 2018. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? And we are adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.